All right, as we said, just give us the page number and line numbers.
Jack.
Mr. Harris, first of all, that you are asking to be offered, I suppose, and then we'll turn to Mr. Norwood, whatever state.
Yeah, I think he was just gonna...
You've already gone over what it is that you're...
What we want to offer.
Offer, okay, great, great. So if he knows that, but so that we know to turn to the right page, you tell us and then tell us your...
I think you ruled on seventy-three and seventy-two. Yeah, okay. So I think we're picking up now on seventy-four. Starting, let's see. I guess it's a continuation of seventy-three where there is discussion. If you look at seventy-four, so her and I had a conversation talking about the daughter. She explained to me, you know, her feelings about the whole situation. Knows if the director heard. I don't know if the director heard all of Ashley and I's conversation or not. So we're talking about this conversation with the daughter that the director's not even privy to according to this. So, and that continues down, probably better for me to stand up. It probably continues down through the end of seventy-four, down to line eight of seventy-five. So we would be objecting to all of that portion. One through seven on seventy-five and one through twenty-five of seventy-four.
I'm sorry, what lines on seventy-four?
One through.
One through?
Yeah, 'cause...
Well, the first line is, "I don't know the exact total time we were at the house." What's...
Yeah, that's a continued way, if you go back.
So, that, is that a problem?
Well, it's a continuation of what's been excluded, I understand, which is a continuation of him explaining about this discussion with the daughter.
Okay.
So I'm saying, okay, and somebody's saying, okay, and he's rambling on about this conversation with the daughter.
All right. So, and you're saying that what's already been excluded is the one thing we covered yesterday, right?
Right, which is this conversation with the daughter, which according to this, the director may not even been privy to.
Right. All right. One through twenty-five on seventy-four and all of seventy-four and one through seven on seventy-five.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Harris, you want to state, and the objection is that it's irrelevant. Is that correct?
It's irrelevant, it's hearsay.
Irrelevant in hearsay.
Part of it, we're going hearsay.
Okay. And, Mr. Harris, it seems to be similar to what you objected to yesterday.
Yeah, just for clarity, on seventy-three, I think from fifteen down, that, I don't think that was excluded. When you say late at night, roughly what time are we talking?
That's correct, okay. So you're saying that the okay and then one through three on seventy-four would be all part of that and would not be excluded?
Correct.
I think Mr. Harris is right about that, Mr. Norwood. Because there, he's not talking about any conversation.
Well, he picks up with that on line five on seventy-four where he says, "So her and I had a conversation."
Right, that's where you're starting.
That's where I'm starting.
Okay, that's fine. So, Mr. Harris, from line five on seventy-four down to eight, seven on seventy-five, what is your response there?
So, okay, I mean, if you look at line eleven on seventy-four, he says, "And at that particular moment, as I mentioned, a light bulb went off to me in terms of, you know, making sure that she was safe and good. Did not know what her next move was. She knew that the director had made up her mind that she was not staying at Ashley's house because she felt Ashley was not going to let her rest." So this just gets into explaining, you know, where they were gonna go next and his concern for her safety.
Well, when they pick up...
Well, Mr. Norwood, all right. Does, at anywhere else, does Mr. Byrd in his deposition explain what he meant by "a light bulb went off" in terms of making sure that she was safe and good? What, I mean, does that tie into something else?
Well, I mean, I think it ties into something else. I don't, I don't know if, I mean, he talks earlier about why he's concerned for his safety and for her safety. And I think that he's, that he's still alluding to that here.
Okay.
But even, but aside, even aside from that, I'm just saying, at least that portion, it gets into explaining, okay, well, what's gonna be the next move? They go from the daughter's house and then you'll see later on, they talk about going to the friend's house.
All right, the objection is sustained. All right, let's go to the next part.
Okay, the next one would be, let's see. It would pick up on line nineteen, well, I'll say eighteen, 'cause there's another okay. And then line eighteen says, okay, on seventy-five. Then it says, "And they both had a relationship with the director." And I say "both," I know the director had a conversation with a female when they actually got to the residence, there was a male there, and the director called the lady back, and then called the lady back. So all of that, we, is irrelevant. And then later on, he talks about going to the friend's house and that's where she was dropped off and that was the end of the ride, so to speak.
All right, so...
So what part are you objecting to?
Uh, starting, let's see, we've made it down to seven, line seven, and we're picking back up on line eighteen through twenty-five on seventy-five. And then one through seventeen on seventy-six.
All right, so the, the answer, I'm sorry. I hate to regress here, but at the top of seventy-five, it's a continuation of the bottom of seventy-four where they're talking about where they're gonna go next. But as far as you understand, and you guys being there, that didn't happen. That didn't happen meaning that she stay at the daughter's house. No, that did not happen. Okay, so where did you go after that? Now, there's, before the things that were excluded, they've already talked about they've driven to the daughter's house, right?
Right.
So it's, it's gonna be in evidence that they're at the daughter's house, right? Okay, so, the question on line three of page seventy-five, "Okay, so where did you go after that?" Okay, that part is, objection's overruled to that. I don't know if you even wanted to object to that because that's not talking about the conversation. That's just, where'd you go next?
All right, where are we now? We're on page...
Top of seventy-five, line three, the question is, "Okay, so where did you go after that?" And the answer is, "The director called," and then that's Sonia, right?
Okay, yeah, that's fine, we're okay with that.
Okay, so we'll change that sustained up to line two on seventy-five, but starting with line three, that, he's withdrawing the objections to line three through seven. And then, so where, is that where you, and of course, you need that for that next line eight to make sense, okay?
Right, right.
Is that where you ended up taking her? 'Cause that's the reference to the neighbor or friend or whatever.
Yeah.
And he's, okay, so now from there, where do you start your objection after that?
Uh, let's see. Probably line twelve through twenty-five on line seventy-five.
Well, now, that's just talking about who it is where they're going, isn't it? What's, what's your objection?
Well, it's irrelevant. It's, "Do you know who this person was?" No.
All right, I'm an overruling relevance because it's all part of the trip. Where did they go? Okay, so over, irrelevance is overruled to that.
Okay.
So we're allowing the conversation about where they're going, which continues on, starting at line nineteen. "Director had a conversation with a female and we actually got to the residence and the director, male there, and the director called the lady back and so forth." Right? Okay, now, are you objecting to that?
Uh, up through, let's see, "Called the lady back, reassurance, interpret something, already talked to her husband, whatever." I think it's innocuous, but I guess it wouldn't hurt. I mean, they're talking about the last stop and some gentleman and all that, and they hug. So it's innocuous, and we will withdraw the objection.
Okay, so, all of, all of seventy-six is in.
Right.
And then, where do you pick up your next objection?
Okay, so that's that. Our next objection actually is within...
Two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five. Uh, let's see. Two sixty-five, uh, seven through twenty-five. And that carries over to, uh, two sixty-six through one through six. And that'll be the end of our objections to their stuff.
You're objecting to that?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, they're referencing, I don't know what they're referencing, but something they try to attribute to Reverend Gray.
Well, specifically, Byrd says, "I know now to be a conversation with he and his ex-wife pertaining the facts of the director being there." You're trying to exclude that?
Yes.
All right. And legal basis is?
It is irrelevant. It relates to some references to what they suggest the reverend said during some discussion relating to his ex-wife is how I'm reading it, but I'm not really clear on what all that means. But I think for our purposes, it's irrelevant and it doesn't involve the director in the sense that they're referencing something that the husband may have said.
Okay, Mr. Harris, what's the relevance of this?
Well, I mean, so, there's a lot of things. The director testified that...
Why don't you address, first of all, there's, there's something that's obviously offensive in there, you know, in line two sixty-six, the top. The answer, lines two to four. You objecting to that being included? Or, I'm sorry, you asking that that be included?
I want that to be included. I mean, I think it shows, it indicates that, you know, this, the director, you know, has, has allowed her subordinate to hear these offensive terms directed at him by her husband, who there'll be evidence of, who, uh, causes some fear in director, in Dr. Byrd based on the fact that she has told him already, you know, that he, that she's alluded to a weapon that is not there anymore. She's alluded to him being volatile and there being, you know, him having outbursts. And so all of that coupled with this idea that he has directed these offensive terms at Dr. Byrd and she's allowed him to hear that, I think that ought to come in.
All right, now, the recording itself...
And she also denied the recording on the stand. She denied that this took place. And so this directly contradicts her testimony.
And I believe that's accurate, isn't it, Mr. Norwood? That she did on witness stand deny playing the recording?
She denied playing a recording for him, yes.
All right. It would seem to be a fair impeachment to try to show that that's not true.
Well, impeachment on a material issue. I mean, this question about whether or not he heard a recording is not material to any of the issues as it relates to malfeasance, right? If we're focusing on malfeasance, which is what I thought this case was about, obviously subject to our defenses, how does that relate to malfeasance?
All right, well, it, it's an issue of, what is malfeasance in the first place is something the commissioners have to decide because it's not defined anywhere in the charter or any governing documents or laws. And second of all, do the circumstances rise to malfeasance? But I believe that whether or not it's true, of course, there's a dispute. Ms. Jenkins Gray denies that she played the recording. Byrd is saying she played a recording. He heard, for him, that he could hear, and so he heard what it was and he's asked what it was, and it was things, including things about him.
And will prejudicial, obviously prejudicial to her based upon some statements that her husband may or may not have made. I mean, this is obviously offensive language and to attribute that to her is, is improper and it's prejudicial.
Well, it's certainly prejudicial language by the husband.
Right, exactly.
But, on the other hand, it, it does appear to be relevant in the sense that she is playing this for her subordinate.
Oh, I don't, I think there's anything in there that says she's playing it for her subordinate.
Well, no, it's, Byrd is her subordinate.
No, I understand that, but...
And he's saying, "She played it for me." He's saying, "She played the recording."
She didn't say she played it for him.
She didn't say that, but he's saying it. That's what I'm saying, it's, it's, okay. So objection's overruled to line, starting on page five, I'm sorry, starting on page two sixty-five. The objection started on, I believe, the question on line seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the objection went from there. And where, what was, I think the end of it is just Mr. Harris's stops and says, "Okay, that's all I have on line eight."
Yes.
Line seven, two sixty-six. And so the objection's overruled to all of that, okay?
Yeah. And that's all of the ones we have.
That's the only objections you have?
Yes.
Great. So, Mr. Harris, let's go to what you want in, besides what we've already...
No, no.
All right, I'm sorry, the other way around. Mr. Harris's objections, but Mr. Norwood, tell us, I guess. We don't know what you want in yet. Mr. Harris does, but we don't, right?
Yeah, did we give him a sheet? Or did we have a sheet?
Yes, I can give you...
Okay.
A lot of trees have been sacrificed today.
Aren't they always, though? Oh, my goodness. Okay, so we go back to the beginning of Byrd, well, we start at line, page one hundred and twelve?
Yes.
Okay, so page one hundred and twelve.
Starting at line eighteen. I don't know if they were even objecting to that.
Yeah, we're not objecting to that.
Not objecting, okay.
Yeah, I guess we need to know what you're objecting to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, I think that's easier. So, page one thirteen, they want to play seven through, they want to play line seven through thirteen and nineteen.
And specifically, just so I, when he's referring to a situation like this as it relates to how this matter has progressed, that this matter refers to the, the actual attempt to dismissal? Is that what this matter is or is it referred to something else?
I believe it does refer to, to this...
The dismissal.
The proceeding, yeah.
And why does the answer, he says, pertaining to a city employee, never, ever, there is no record of a director personnel ever being charged malfeasance, non-feasance, or misfeasance.
Okay.
Right.
All right, I just wanted to clarify what, what we're talking about here with this matter. Okay, thank you. And so, go ahead, what's your objection to that?
And the objection is that it's irrelevant. And the same with nineteen through twenty-five. I think it's the same kind of conversation.
Okay, so your objection starts, page one hundred and thirteen, line seven, and does it continue on?
So they, they, they want to play seven through thirteen. We're objecting to that.
Right, okay.
Then, then they want to play nineteen through twenty-five.
Same page?
Yeah, same page.
And same subject?
Right. And we're objecting to that.
Doesn't it, isn't it relevant to progressive discipline?
But progressive discipline is not a, an issue in, in the case. And whether someone has been disciplined ever in the history of the city for this same violation is not relevant to whether she committed the violation.
All right, and state why you think progressive discipline is not applicable.
There's, I mean, there's, no one's asking for progressive discipline here. This is, I mean, the issue is whether there was malfeasance committed and whether the commissioner should recommend, you know, that she be removed from office for malfeasance.
Well, but that's, that second part of it is, what is, there's two, there's, the issue of, did she commit malfeasance? That's a factual, did she or didn't she? Okay, and, and before that, the commissioners have to decide what, what is malfeasance anyway? What's the city charter mean by malfeasance? Did she commit it? But the third issue, I believe, is, what's their recommendation to the mayor? I mean, the commissioners, I'm not, I'm just laying out the issues here. They could decide, yes, she committed malfeasance, but the malfe, and this is what our discussion was in it yesterday about something that goes to the magnitude of the offense, that there could be greater or lesser degrees, right?
Yes.
And I, so I think this would go to, what's the commissioner's recommendation to the mayor for punishment?
So, right.
Could not the, could not the commissioners recommend to the mayor a punishment less than malfe, than dismissal?
First off, I think that's a legal issue that the commission could decide on their own.
Yes, it is, because we have unprecedented, so we don't have a guideline here and it doesn't say one way or the other, it has to be or it doesn't have to be, right?
So there's no need to hear from the, you know, the witness as to whether or not the commission should, you know, recommend progressive discipline. Also, and we filed a motion and, and related to this issue of whether evidence of uneven discipline or, you know, evidence whether some other person, you know, in the past has ever been disciplined for the same kind of offense, whether that evidence is relevant and should come in. And, you know, based on the RORDA case, which also deals with, you know, this whole political interference issue, which we'll get to later, that evidence is irrelevant and should not come in.
All right, well, obviously, we haven't heard your motion yet. We can have to hear it later on.
Well, you just...
But, but for now, the objection is overruled to this portion, okay?
All right.
So next part that you object to?
One fourteen, page one fourteen, lines one through nine. This is, I guess it's similar. He's asking about whether, you know, Jared Boyd and Sarah Baker have ever been involved in other disciplinary matters. And so that's one through nine. I think that's irrelevant as well.
I'm sorry, what page?
It's, it's, it's page one fourteen.
Write the next one, one through nine.
Lines one through nine. What about the involvement of Jared Boyd and Sarah Baker? Have you ever, in all of the disciplinary matters you've been involved in? Have you ever seen a chief of staff, deputy chief of staff, get involved in those type of personnel matters? No, sir, ever, no, sir.
How would that be relevant? Oh, I, Mr. Norwood, I'm not, we don't have time because we need to move here. That's relevant, that's irrelevant, so the objection to that is sustained.
No, 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 no. I shouldn't have been heard on that. I thought we were gonna have...
Well, except...
Here's how it's relevant. Our retaliation piece, which is the scenario where you have the chief of staff assigned for the first time, and we saw the document about this delegation of authority, never have investigated anybody, but somehow they are selected to go after that. We've seen the defects in the notice, at least from our standpoint about setting a hearing. All of that ties to the political interference that she testified to. She testified that this whole, that the initiation and launching this ship was all political interference. And so the commissioner should be able to determine whether or not, when these folks are selected, carefully selected, to go after this individual, whether or not that's relevant.
Okay.
And they purportedly conducted the investigation. We're gonna have evidence about the flaws in that investigation, the fact that it was a 24-hour investigation, the fact that they overlooked obvious evidence, such as the fact that Mr. Boyd had an extra 400 hours on his time, on his log, that they apparently didn't care about, right? You know, they're going after her for, you know, 100 or 220 miles. He's got an extra 400 miles when he's off over the holiday and they just ignore that.
Okay, the objection's sustained to page one hundred and fourteen, lines one through seven. What's the next objection?
Uh, page one fifteen, line six through twenty-five, irrelevant.
One fourteen? Fifty, I'm sorry.
Line six through twenty-five.
All right. What's the... All right. I know, Mr. Norwood, that you, you, there's other things that you've argued about relating to the independence, and in fact, there was testimony from the director herself about the independence of the civil service commission. Lines nine through eighteen, I assume that's your reason for that, right?
Right, this is talking about the independence of that office as established by charter and political interference with that operation, which is, in our view, the whole motive while this ship was launched to begin with.
All right. The, I believe it's relevant, lines nine through seventeen, office. Now, the last line, and so, no, there's never been a situation like that. I'm not clear what he's, what situation is he talking about?
Well, if the rest of it comes in the last line, we can exclude that because it picks up when he talks about interference from Rule 200, which is the mayor's office, which I expect you're gonna be objecting to that, too.
All right. The objection to that is what, relevance, right? Lines, line six through eighteen. Okay, the objection to that's... Okay, the objection to that is overruled, and then, the question, line 19, is just a continuation of that, because it's, it's the last part of it, independence from room 200, you say interference, what do you mean by that? And then, he explains what he means by that. And, through what, what's the last line that you are objecting to? Goes into line 116?
Yes. But, line 116, line 1.
Just the first line is the rest of the answer.
Yeah.
And after that...
Yeah, we have a dozen anything beyond that, we pick it up later.
You pick up later, so, okay. Objections overruled to everything through line 1 of page 116, and so, let's go to the next one.
Next one's line 117. I'm sorry, page, page 117, line 7 through 25.
Describing the character of the director?
Yeah.
All right.
I, that's not relevant here.
Well...
How is her character relevant? I, I think...
Well, this, I mean, the, the, the commission needs to decide whether or not, whether or not there's malfeasance, if there was, whether or not there mitigates, mitigating circumstances. And then, we got these issues of political interference and all that kind of stuff. On this front, we have a person who has worked shoulder to shoulder with her, and has testified to her character, her personality, how she works, whether or not she's the kind of person that did the rules, those sorts of things are relevant for the commission to determine, you know, first of all, is this malfeasance, number one, and if it is, is this a mitigating factor? Does this justify, as you mentioned, progressive discipline of some sort? Those are the factors, and this is the person who worked closely with her, who has stated, under oath, her personality, and her work, as it relates to her work, not her personality about, you know, going to the movies, he's talking about her work and her character. Character evidence, when they're attacking her saying she's a malfeasiner, is clearly highly relevant to what we believe the commission should have to consider.
We didn't attack her character, we just said, we just said she committed malfeasance when she did, you know, the, what, what we put, the evidence that we put on it.
Well...
We didn't say, you know, she's, she's dishonest, she's got bad character, she, I mean...
Malfeasance by definition is bad character. Mal means bad, I mean, and, 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 I think in great terms, mal.
You're correct about mal, but it, that is in reference to a specific action, not character in general.
That's on the malfeasance problem, the mitigation problem, right? Part of what, in fact, is in their letter, it says on page 2 of the pre-termination letter, that at the pre-termination review and public hearing, you will have the opportunity to review any evidence, respond to the charges, and present your own evidence, including any mitigating circumstances, that should be considered in deciding whether, and/or what discipline should be issued here. So, this is what they have notified her of in the pre-term, and mitigation relates to, if we've got a good person who made a mistake, assuming that rises to the level of malfeasance, what would we recommend in that circumstance, coupled with the fact that we have a successful director personnel who has assisted and enabled the city to make improvements, things of that sort? Those are all factors we believe that the commission should consider as mitigation.
And, and just to be clear, Mr. Harris, you're objecting to everything on page 117, starting on line 7, the rest of that page, and all of pages 118, 119, and 120, and the first 11 lines on 121?
Yeah, it looks like all of that is, you know, all, however many pages that is.
It's, he continues, there's no other question all through, yes, there is, on line 119, there's an okay, what about honesty?
Yeah.
So, there's that additional question.
Other than those questions, there's this long soliloquy about her character, which, again, we, I, we would object to all of it. I mean, mitigating circumstances means mitigating circumstances related to, you know, the, or conduct.
Isn't the honesty of a person something that would be admissible, in terms of, when I say honesty, the reputation? Well, of course, this doesn't ask for reputation, does it? It just, it just asks for honesty. All right.
And, and they're attacking her credibility, and that becomes relevant to whether or not this person is a person that's sly under oath. They're saying she's lying under oath.
But this is not her reputation for telling the truth.
This is her character based upon his working with her.
All right.
And as he testifies, that, he says, about his interactions with her, part of the thing is they're saying somehow she made her, him do certain things, and he's saying that he and her have disagreements, professional disagreements, that he, she helped him advance. All of those sorts of things are very, very relevant to mitigation, and whether or not she is a liar under oath, which is what they're alleging.
Okay.
These are of support.
I'm gonna sustain the objection to lines, what we said, starting on page 117, line 7, through the rest of that page, all of pages 118, 119, and 120, going into page 121, lines 1 through 11. Okay? That cover it? Then, what's the next area that you're objecting to, I suppose? Are there...
Let's see, page 124. Lines 4 through 25. This, I believe, relates to, I, I object, I'm objecting on relevancy grounds, as well as, it's quite repetitive. This, I believe, relates to that annual report that was put out, we just, the witness seems to kind of go over those issues again, on, on page 124, 125, and 126.
All right. Your objection starts on 124?
Yes.
At which line?
At line 4.
Tell us about those improvements reflected in the report that you essentially took the lead on. And this is Byrd being asked about that.
Yeah, he was the point person on the annual report.
Okay. However, Mr. Harris, as I recall, yesterday, you, you asked questions about that annual report, all right? So, I think you, you put that in, so I think, I'd, I'd overrule the objection, because I think you've made an issue of that, so I think this is relevant. Byrd, being a person working on the report, according to his own testimony, and your questions to her were, when did you start working on the report? When was the report done? And all that.
Right, so the, so to clarify, my questions, so they put the report in initially, and went on and on about it. My question was, have you ever done a report like this before? The answer was no, so you did it after this pre-termination process, yes. That's, I didn't go into the details of the report, so...
I think that goes to the weight of it.
Okay.
Not to the relevance of it, okay? So, so that's 124, what page is the next objection on?
Well, that one, so that, I think that covers, I believe that covers 125, let's see, let's make sure. Yeah, so that would, that objection would have gone to 125 and 126, lines 1 through 19, that was all the same, all the report.
Okay, so that's...
And you've, you've overruled that.
Overrule that.
So, 127. 127, lines 13 through 21. I, I object to the relevancy.
Line 13 through 21?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Overruled. Okay, next one?
Next one is line 1, oh, I'm sorry, page 129. Yes, 6 through 20. Objecting on, as irrelevant.
One, page, starting on page 129, line 6, well, line 6 on the copy I'm looking at is a partial sentence.
Yeah, I mean, I assume they, so this is what we have, but I assume that they meant line 7, maybe?
What do you...
Yeah, line 7, let's say not line 7.
Okay.
So, the question at line, starting at line...
Starting at line 7 is, okay.
7 through 20, yeah.
Okay, so... So, starting at line 7, you're objecting, and to, to where?
To line 20.
Just to 20, okay. All right, I'm gonna sustain that objection.
Well...
I'm gonna sustain it, because it's repetitive.
Well, what, no, this is, this is actually more detailed in this sense, because the question is whether or not she's made these improvements, and he says, I can say without a shadow of a doubt, no hesitation, and a hundred times that we're headed in the right direction in two and a half years. Before, he was talking about the improvements. Here, he's talking about the substantial advancements under her leadership, and so, and under the doctrine of completeness, to put it all in context, they're trying to paint her as a malfeasiner and things of that sort, and he is, and this is all relevant to mitigation as well.
Okay, I, all right, all right. Relevant to mitigation, it's overruled, the objection's overruled. It is relevant to mitigation. All right, so, next? And just, yeah, I'm sorry. And just so, gentlemen, it's, you know, it's, it's now just about 10 o'clock when we said we'd be starting, and we're only halfway through the first page here. Right? Now, let me ask you this, we talked, are you able to call another witness before we get to Byrd?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so let's stop what we're doing, and how, do you anticipate how long that witness is gonna, who's that next witness?
Well, I gotta make sure she's, she's ready, Bianca Lambert.
Okay, is that the one the attorney was representing?
No.
No, different one, okay. Is the one that has her own attorney, is she on the list for possibly this morning, or not? Or not?
Not.
Probably, probably not, okay. And does he know that pretty much, or...
Um, I don't, I don't think we've talked since yesterday.
Okay. But she is available in the sense of working, at, she's at her job where she'd be on call?
As I understand it.
As I understand it, okay.
And we're talking to Dord, and that, we have objections to that, this is...
That's who the daughter is, okay, but we'll have to cross that bridge. Any other witness that you intend to call this morning before we get to Byrd?
Um, I can't, yeah, we can, Bianca Lambert, John Understall.
Okay. So, let's stop now, open up the doors, and we'll start the, the hearing after chairman calls us to order and calls the roll, and then, we will proceed with those additional witnesses.
Let us, let us make sure that she is here.
Okay, good idea.
Didn't give you enough time?
No.
You all right now?
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Chairperson Barney.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Lou Ellen.
Yes.
Okay. We're back in the hearing.
All right, and with that, we have a little bit of an amendment to the order of witnesses. So, the next witness for the appointing authority, you wanna call your next witness, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Your Honor, we call John Understall.
Okay. First, if you just face the clerk there, raise your right hand, she'll swear you in.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony that you are about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, take your seat, and you may proceed.
Could you go ahead and state your name for the record?
My name is John Understall.
Who's your employer?
The City of St. Louis Department of Personnel.
What's your current position?
I am a deputy director.
And, just, can you describe for us generally what your duties and responsibilities are?
So, I have three sections of personnel that I have responsibilities for, classification compensation section, the HRIS system section, and benefits wellness as well.
Okay. And you're appearing here at this proceeding pursuant to a subpoena, is that right?
That's correct.
Fair to say you'd rather be somewhere else?
Anywhere else.
Thanks. I wanna direct your attention to a meeting that you were a part of, with the director of personnel, Sonia Jenkins-Grey, on Thursday, August 15.
Okay.
Of 2024. Do you recall that?
I do.
How did you come to be in a meeting with the director that day?
So, earlier in the day, Bianca Lambert, who's one of my subordinates, had informed me that she was not feeling well, she said that she was pretty certain she wanted to quit her job with the city. She had told me that she had talked to somebody, Sarah Baker in the mayor's office, about finding an alternative way out of personnel potentially, or resigning, potentially finding a position at IT. So, to, my understanding, Sarah told her to give her the day to try to work something out. Later in that, that day, I think it was around 2, Bianca said that she wasn't feeling well and, and needed to go home and take medical leave. About an hour after that, the director asked if me and Bianca could come down for a meeting. I told her that Bianca wasn't there, and asked if she wanted me to call her in, she said, please. So, we went down to her meeting to discuss that. I guess the director had found out that Bianca was, her intentions was quitting.
Okay. So, you, you contacted Bianca to let her know that the director wanted to meet with her?
Correct.
Okay. And, so, she agreed to come back to meet with her?
Right.
And, did, did Bianca Lambert ask you to attend the meeting also?
Well, the, the director had asked that we both come down.
Okay, got it. All right, so, and about what time do you meet with the director?
So, I, I think it was about a little after 3 by the time, yeah, maybe 3:30-ish.
Okay. And where do you meet with her?
In the director's office.
And that's in, in this building?
Yes, it's adjacent to this room.
All right. And was anyone in that meeting besides you, the director, and Bianca Lambert?
No.
I wanna ask you about what was said in that meeting, okay? Tell us, tell us what was said in the meeting.
So, when Bianca came, so first, when Bianca came to my office, she said that she needed to, to get something off her chest. She had told me probably a month prior that Anthony Byrd, another employee of the Department of Personnel, had told her a story about the director that wasn't flattering. So, she brought it up a couple times, because Anthony, I guess, had come back and, and talked to her, or brought it up to her, and she said she didn't believe that it was true. She thought that Anthony was unreliable, but had mentioned that usually there's some truth to the things that he said. So, she was concerned about it, but the, the director has reiterated to us, you know, don't spread gossip, so she didn't wanna spread something that she couldn't confirm. So, when Bianca was called back, she decided that she was going to be quitting regardless, so she wanted to give the director the gift of, of knowing what Anthony was, was saying, essentially, so... give the Director the gift of, of knowing what Anthony was, was saying essentially, so.
And so, in the meeting?
So, yeah, when we get to the meeting, uh, the Director tried to talk first, and Bianca asked that, that she could go first and kinda stop the Director from, uh, going into what she was going to say. And she recounted a story that Anthony had told her, so it was, um, so probably a month prior, 'cause that's when she started, um, telling me that, that he had told her these stories. Uh, they had went, the Director had contacted Anthony and asked him to secure a car, a city car for the purpose of, um, going out of town. Anthony said that it was no problem to secure the car, had gotten the car, they, then they'd made a trip to, um, Jefferson City with the city car. So.
This is Bianca, um, recounting to the Director?
Right.
What she had learned.
And this is the first time that I had heard anything of the story, because every time Bianca had brought up that something had occurred, she was very adamant that she didn't wanna tell me that the circumstances were embarrassing and, and she didn't think it was appropriate, uh, because she couldn't substantiate, uh, what was told.
Okay, so what else did, did Bianca say?
So, she said, um, on this trip, that they had went to a location that wasn't clear to me where this was.
Well, let me object, 'cause this is all double hearsay, it sounds like to me.
Well, I mean, this is set up to explain, um, the, the Director's response to hearing this information. I mean, it's not gonna make sense if, 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 um, I ask him to re, to tell us what the Director said in the meeting, unless you know what was said to the Director. So, it's, so it's not hearsay, it's not offered for the truth of the matter asserted, it's offered to explain the Director's response.
All right, well, it better be relevant.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, they, so they, once they got to Jeff City, they, they arrived at some location. Wasn't clear to me, at some point, the Director, uh, it was a parking lot or something that exited the car. Um, and Anthony was just alone at the car.
I, I'm not clear from where you picked up your answer, so, wait, wait, let's state a question.
Sure.
And what I'm not clear about is whether the witness is talking about what, who said at the meeting. So, let's make these things clear, uh, by the question, first of all.
So.
What you're asking about.
Um, I'm asking you to recount what Bianca Lambert said in this meeting that you had with, that you and her had with the Director. And is that what you do, are you telling us what-
Yes, I'm recounting her words.
And, and Bianca is saying what she learned from Anthony Byrd?
Right. So, upon arriving to this location, uh, the Director had exited the car, Anthony was alone at the car. The Director's husband, um, came out of, um, a building and approached Anthony. Then he made a comment to Anthony and asked if, if the Director was also there, which Anthony said that, of course, she was. At some point in time, the Director came back to the car. There was some sort of altercation of some sort in this area.
And just to be clear, you're not offering this to prove that any of this is true. You're just offering this to somehow show the basis for which the subsequent Director's statement was made?
Yes. That's correct.
Because it is, at this point, at least, double hearsay.
Again, it's not offered to prove the-
I understand that, I just wanna be clear, it's, and, and that's the only reason we're admitting it, is not that to suggest that anything in these statements that are being recounted are true or not, but just as you explained, to try to then put us in a position to be able to understand what is further recounted about the Director's statements.
Correct.
So.
Or statements in their actions.
With that limitation on what this is being admitted for. Go ahead.
So, there was some sort of, um, altercation at the, the parking lot. Sounded like that somebody was maybe chasing somebody around or something to that effect. Then, um, the Director got out her phone, and she started to look through texts. And I stopped her, and I said, "Direct-"
Okay, so, hold on, so, so that was the end of the, the story that Bianca told?
I mean, that, yeah, that's most, most of what I remember at this time, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, so then you, you started to say that the Director pulled out her phone, so, so we're back in the meeting, right?
Right.
Okay, so, so Bianca said what she said.
Right.
And then, then what happened next?
So, the Director pulled out her phone and started going through text messages. I stopped the Director and told, reiterated the fact that this is all that I had heard, and-
Why did you do that?
Bianca had indicated that some of the details of what had occurred were embarrassing and that she didn't really feel comfortable, um, saying even in front of me. So, I, I wanted to make the Director know that, like, I didn't need to hear more of that story, I wasn't trying to hear more of the story. So, at that point, she stopped going through the texts. Then she started making a phone call on the, the phone. She quieted Bianca and I.
What do you mean, she quieted you?
She motioned for us to not make any sounds.
Okay.
And then she called Anthony, and she asked us a series of questions with Anthony about trust. Would you ever do anything to hurt me? Would you ever, um, tell stories of things that were done in, in, you know, privacy or secrecy? To which Anthony responded, "No, I would never hurt you, I'd never do anything like that."
So, so let me just make sure I understand, so you're saying that the Director tells you and Bianca to quiet down?
Yes.
She has her phone?
Yes.
She makes a call to Anthony Byrd on speaker?
Yes.
And she asks him things like, "Would you ever do anything to hurt me?"
Correct.
Okay, um, "Would you ever repeat what I told you in confidence?"
Right.
All right. Okay, and then you said that, um, Anthony Byrd said, "No, I would never do that."
Correct. Then she asked Anthony if he would come in to her office for a meeting. Sounded like he might have not been in the office at that time. He agreed to, to come for that meeting. She had us then leave through this door. And then we left.
What do you mean, through this door?
So, this goes into her office, it's not the front door of her office, so I think Anthony was coming, so she had us go out the, the back.
Okay, so had you go out the back so as, to not have Anthony see you lea-, you guys leaving?
That would, yeah, that, I would assume that was why.
Okay, um, and during the conversation, during this meeting, um, does the Director ever deny, um, anything that Bianca said?
She didn't deny anything, she seemed to, when she was going to the text, want to clarify that, um, hate to speculate, but it seemed to be to the point of, like, Anthony said, the, taking the car was okay or something to that effect.
Okay. Did, but does she say anything about, you know, the taking of the car or any of that? Does she say anything about that?
No, there, there wasn't any denial or anything, it was, and, and, you know, I definitely was not trying to press or wanting to know anymore. Uh, especially with the, the circumstances being indicated that it was, you know, embarrassing for the Director.
And so, after, um, you know, you, you and Bianca were told to kinda exit out another door while, um, Byrd was coming in a different door, what, what happened next?
Well, we had to, we'd actually left our phones on, on her secretary's desk. She had a policy at one point of not bringing phones into conversation, so we realized we didn't have our phones, so we went quickly and grabbed those, before Anthony had come down and left, went back to our offices.
All right. And, uh, so, did you have occasion to, um, speak with anyone on the mayor's staff or in the mayor's office about what you just told us?
So, that was on a Thursday when that occurred.
The meeting, you mean?
Yes.
August 15th?
Yes. And, uh, so Bianca had indicated that the Director had had more conversations with her after that. And it sounded like a lot of, a lot of the conversation was trying to, um, convince Bianca that, that she wasn't a bad person, or that, that she wasn't trying to intentionally, or wasn't trying to intentionally do anything bad. That, over the weekend, I hadn't, I didn't talk to Bianca over the weekend. Then on Monday, uh, she came to my office the, the first thing in the morning, and she told me that she was convinced that the Director wasn't going to self-report and that she felt an obligation to report at that point, that, um, she couldn't wait any longer for the reporting to occur.
So, that was Monday, August the 19th?
Yes.
Um, and so after she told you that, um, then what, what did you and Bianca do?
So, I said I wasn't sure what would be the right, well, reporting, uh, mechanism for that. She asked if she could call Kathleen Tanner, who's another, she's a performance Deputy Director, for guidance, I said I thought that would be fine. She called Kathleen on speakerphone and asked, "How would we report something like this?" And Kathleen had indicated she thought the right thing is always to report up the chain of command, and that in the, in this situation, the Director's position is kinda unique, but the closest thing to an appointed authority would be, uh, Jared Boyd and Sarah Baker.
Okay. And so, based on, um, that information that you received, did you have occasion to meet with, um, Sarah Baker?
Yeah, so she, Bianca called Sarah and arranged for us to come over. I'm, I'm not sure what time the meeting was, but we went over to, to Sarah's office and recounted the story essentially.
That, that same day, Monday the 19th?
I believe.
Okay, so you and, um, Bianca go over to, um, meet with Sarah Baker?
Correct.
All right, and as you said, and in that meeting, was it just the three of you?
I think it was at that time.
Meaning you, Bianca, and Sarah Baker?
Yeah.
Okay, and in that meeting, Bianca and you report the same thing you just testified to?
Right.
About, you know, what happened, um, about what was reported to Bianca, uh, by Anthony Byrd?
Right.
Were you asked to, um, write a statement?
Yeah, there, a day or two after the initial meeting, uh, I think Sarah had, uh, sent an email asking that we, uh, put our statements in writing.
Okay. There's a binder up in front of you, uh, the smaller one. If you would flip to tab, I believe it's tab 10. I want you to take a look at that, so it's, it's appointing authorities exhibit 10. Take a look at that. Do you recognize that exhibit?
Yeah.
What is it?
That's my statement.
Okay, so that's the statement you wrote?
It is.
In response to Sarah Baker's request that you, uh, provide a statement?
Yes.
Okay, um, I would move for the admission into evidence of exhibit 10.
Any objection?
No objection.
No objection, exhibit 10 is admitted.
Mr. Understall, you, you were once a finalist, um, for the Director of Personnel position, is that right?
That's correct.
And Sonia Jenkins-Grey beat you out?
She did.
Okay. Do you, do you hold any grudge against her as a result of that?
No, I was, uh, relieved.
You were relieved?
Yes.
Are you, have you generally been a supporter of the Director?
Very much so.
Okay. And so, when you learned the information that you learned, what was your reaction?
A lot of emotions. I, sadness, um-
Were you disappointed?
I was.
That's all I have.
All right, cross-examination.
Could you, Mr. Understall, provide your employment background, both prior to starting the city and, and with the city?
Okay, so I've been with the city the last 18 years. So, prior to that, I briefly worked, uh, as aquatics coordinator at the YMCA. Uh, this is really my first professional job after college.
Okay, and, and when you started with the city, you say 18 years ago?
Yes.
Where did you start?
I started as a HR Specialist 1 in the Training Division.
Okay, and what did that job entail?
Giving presentations to city employees on a variety of, uh, topics, uh, all the mandatory classes that we give, orientations, things like that.
Okay, and what was the next job?
Uh, so, I promoted within the Training Division eventually to, to, uh, HR Specialist 2. Was asked to move into the Employee Relations Section. Transferred there, worked for a little while, uh, was promoted to a HR Specialist 3. And then, next, um, was promoted to the Manager of Classification Compensation. Uh, and that was the, the last job prior to the current job.
Okay, and you had indicated that you were, you are a supporter of the Director.
Yeah, I think I've always supported the Director.
And what do you mean by that, when you say I'm a supporter of Director Sonia Jenkins-Grey?
Um, I think I was always one to, um, provide her encouragement, to support her policies or, or plans that she would introduce. When people would speak negatively about her, try to defend her, and, and, yeah.
And what about the improvements made in the office? Are you aware of the fact that she's, through, under her leadership, helped make significant improvements in that office?
Yeah.
Tell us about that.
Um, I, I mean, the, the best indicators probably are, are report, that yearly report that recently came out.
Okay, the annual report, is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah.
And if you look at the thicker binder, I think, exhibit 2.
Okay.
Uh, the first page, I think you might be on the, yeah, oh, yeah. And, and that is, and it's on the screen too, the, the annual report, did you have any role in putting that report together?
Uh, yeah, each section, um, we contributed data, uh, the various sections, so I have in particular, class and comp, the one that I was most involved in, um, but, yeah.
How, how long was that reported process?
Um, it was a while, it was several months, I think.
Starting when, do you recall?
I don't. I know there's a lot of emails at different times for data, I'm not sure at what point the data was for that report or, or just other, um, other reports.
What's the purpose of the annual report?
As I understand it, it's a requirement to give to the commission on a yearly basis to report on all the, the things that was done by the department.
And did you have a chance to review that report?
I did.
And do you see anything in that report that was inaccurate?
How so?
I mean, in any way?
I think we had differences on, on some of the things that were in the report, um, composition and things like that.
Compas-, you say?
How it was composed, or, or how, like, I remember in particular, like, a chart that we talked about, how it should be arranged and things like that.
So, the form as a, I'm not talking about the substance.
Right, yeah, I mean, th- there's a lot of the sections that I don't, like, I can't verify how mu- what recruitment did or the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
But, no, I mean, I didn't see, um, anything wrong with, with those things.
And you provided accurate data?
Yes.
And your data is reflected in the report as well?
Yes.
And the, you saw the testimonials, right?
Yes.
All right, and was there anything about those testimonials that you felt were out, out of kilter? That's a legal term, by the way.
Uh, no, I- No, I, I didn't.
Okay. When she started as Director of Personnel, and I think it was November of 2023, she was new to city government. You knew that, right?
Yes.
But she had an extensive resume, is that right?
Yes.
And you talked about being relieved at the fact that you didn't get the job because it's a lot of pressure in that job, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
And when she came in, there were a lot of problems associated with filling positions, is that right?
I mean, again, that's not my area, but yeah, I mean, that was something that, that at least was the perception.
Well, and you were there, you knew that there were problems, right?
Yeah. I know that there was always, there's always been issues with, or at least, that's always been the issue made by people of how quickly positions are filled and, and all of that, yes.
Okay. And things were not the most automated before she started, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, very paper-based.
Very paper-based. They had a thing they called typewriters there, you recall that?
Yep.
Okay. I understand the typewriters are gone now, right?
I think there's a few people that have held on to them tightly, but definitely not used like they were before.
And, and is that because of the automation that she brought to the mix as related to HR?
Yeah. I mean, the, the systems in place has certainly eliminated the, the need for a lot of the, the paper that we had before.
And is the office running more efficiently as a result?
There's still lots of bugs within the system, lots of, and certainly I see it a lot more because that is now one of my areas of responsibility, but I, I definitely think in the long run it will be better.
Right. Interfacing more with the comptroller's office and other areas within the city government, is that right?
Yeah. I think it, it makes, you know, a lot of things easier and, you know, transparency a lot easier than having roster cards and things like that.
And what about recruitment?
What about?
In terms of what she has done to help in that space?
Yeah. I, I definitely, the numbers are on, in there. I mean, I, I, it is one of the areas that I'm probably least involved in, but I, I do, you know, hear in Taleo and how it's, it's helping things and the work that the staff's doing up there, but it, it is definitely not my first hand, where I have the most knowledge in.
And so in your view, has she done, and I'll use it, excellent job in that position as Director of Personnel over that two and a half, two years, few months timeframe?
I think that's a hard standard to have, so I don't know that I would say excellent job. There's been struggles that she's dealt with and lots of issues, but there's certainly been improvements as well.
And some of those struggles relate to the fact that she's been under a hostile situation with someone supporting her, is correct?
I think there, there's been, so one of the things I told her early on, she had a lot of resistance, you know, change is hard for everybody, and this was a lot of dramatic change overnight from the, the previous director, and, you know, I remember having conversations with her and telling her, like, it's not you, it's, it's that position, no matter what, you're always going to have people that are, you know...
Resistant to change?
Yeah, that are going to be against you just because you were in that position, or going to make it difficult for you because you're in that position.
And you and she had a number of conversations about that, correct?
Yes. I was always trying to uplift her, encourage her. I remember telling her, early on, you know, you're the right person for the job, please, you know, stick in there.
And, and when she was undergoing these challenges, as you call them, with staff, and you attribute some of it to the fact that people are resistant to change, right?
Yeah.
And these were dramatic changes in terms of the automations, all of the efforts to improve the department?
Yeah. I mean, I think there was, there was changes in every aspect, essentially overnight.
And these are civil servants. Would you agree that civil servants are generally resistant to that type of change, particularly people who've been there for decades?
Yeah. And I told her, our department in particular, I, I thought was more change-resistant than, than probably most, so I, I do think it was a very difficult situation, and one of the situations why, you know, I talked about that relief of, of, it's a big job and a hard job to, to make the kind of impact that you want to make in that, that position.
Okay. But she did it, dramatic changes, right?
I, I mean, we're on our way. Like, there's certainly still resistance, there's certainly still a lot of those obstacles, but, but like I said, this is where you can see the numbers of, of things here in the report.
So we are on our way, meaning things are getting better under her leadership?
Yeah. I mean, I think there's certainly been some improvements.
You said dramatic changes, right?
There, there's definitely, yes, the change has been dramatic.
Okay. All right. Fair enough. Now, are you aware of any efforts by the mayor's office that you would describe as political interference?
I'm going to object as irrelevant. Overruled.
I don't know. I know that term is used a lot by people within the department, but I, I, it's not a term that I use a lot.
Okay. What would you do? Are you familiar with the term interference by room 200? Are you familiar with that terminology?
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with political interference, and I'm familiar with, you know, a lot of people describing things as that. I, I don't know that, I think I've always looked at the, the responsibilities of the position in the department as to be collaborative with not only the mayor's office, but appointed authorities in general. So to me, that was always a fine line to try to define what that is, political interference.
Okay. And so you're saying that you, under oath today, that you're not aware of any situation involving the mayor's staff that you would consider political interference? Is that your testimony here today?
I, I don't know that there's anything that, I don't know what that means, to, to be able to define that as clear political interference.
All right. And are you aware of a situation that involved a classification for the Deputy Director of Public Safety?
What, what specifically? Like, again...
Let me just, let me just adjust to the relevance of that.
Were we talking about political interference?
All right.
He's testified that he doesn't even know what that means, so...
Well, and I'm going to refresh his recollection with a memo that he wrote regarding political interference as related to this director, Deputy Director of Public Safety.
All right. So the objection's overruled to the question, I believe, was just simply whether he recalled or was familiar with something about that position, not with the specifics. So why don't you re-ask that question? Let's get the answer to that, then let's hear the next question and what the objection is then.
Well, let me hand you what's been marked as respondent's...
Different question.
Exhibit 40.
Respondent's exhibit 40?
Yeah, this is a new one, I think. And it's got... Do I have to...
This does not even pertain to the Director of Personnel's position or this matter.
Well, I asked him about political interference under the mayor, let's, let's focus on that. And this, I mean, I guess the question is whether or not this fills, fits that bill. First of all, what is respondent's...
Oh, wait, 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 let me just review and the other commissioner, the commissioners review it before you ask the question.
I would also note, this is even before this director's tenure, before she was employed by the city.
The date of it is 22? All right. So the objection to relevance to exhibit 40 is sustained, so...
Well, this goes to now impeachment, since he suggested that he wasn't aware of any political interference by the mayor and his mayor's staff.
All right. And again, well, all right. You're contending that this document shows political interference, correct?
That's my reading of the document as relates to the mayor.
There's nothing in the document, and it is written by Mr. Moten, the memorandum...
No, no, it's actually...
I'm sorry, written by Mr. Understall to Mr. Moten.
Yes.
Nothing in the document itself that makes any reference to the words "political interference", correct? It recounts the history of a certain position and classification and so forth.
What it relates to is an effort to place an unco...
It, it's, the question is whether it's political interference, or whether it's relevant or not. I'll tell you what, I'm going to, I'm going to back up and go ahead and overrule the objection. Go ahead, admit it.
Your Honor, you just suspended it.
Well, I know I did, and, and the question is, I suppose, one of the issues is, what is political interference after all?
Yeah.
Before, so let me just...
And Mr. Understall has claimed that he doesn't use those words, and so therefore, this is an offer attempting to show that he may not use those words, but he's aware of some history. Now whether, Mr., well, so, overruled, it's admitted.
Now, Mr. Understall...
You can ask about it.
Can I just say for the record?
That your objection is what legal grounds?
That, yeah, that it's irrelevant, I mean, this is a document...
That it's irrelevant, or the legal, irrelevant of the legal grounds, any other legal grounds?
And it doesn't go to impeach the witness's testimony, it doesn't refresh any recollection...
It doesn't go to impeach it, it goes to explain it.
But it's irrelevant.
Well, I understand, I overruled your previous objection to his statement in answer to the question about political interference, and his answer was, he doesn't use that term. So then this is fair to perhaps inquire, well, what exactly is your understanding of, of that term, or what it means?
Well...
In this context of the Department of Personnel?
Well, I'm going to allow you to state a foundational admission. First of all, what is this document, yeah, respondent's exhibit 40? What is that?
It's a memo to the, the former interim Director of Personnel.
By whom? Who prepared the memo?
I did.
And why did you prepare the memo?
It's to, to recommend that a position be declared supernumerary or unnecessary.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Could you speak up?
To, to explain that the position appears to be a supernumerary position or unnecessary.
Well, what does supernumerary mean? For us laypeople like me, supernumerary, what is that?
Right. Unneeded or unnecessary, like a duplicate position?
Who, who was trying to create this position?
I assume the, the Director of Public Safety would be who would have submitted the requisition.
All right. And, and it says, under... Well, let's, let's walk through it. You say on 4/19/22, the classification compensation section was forwarded requisition for one new deputy, for one new Deputy Director of Public Safety position in the office of the Director of Public Safety, right?
Correct.
That's what you were identifying?
Yes.
And it included with the requisition a revised organizational chart and a letter to the Director of Personnel, asking that the classification list for the Deputy Director of Public Safety, this is promotion only. Do you see that? First paragraph. You see that, right?
Yeah.
That's what you wrote, right?
Yes.
And what'd you mean when you said the certification list is for promotion only? What were you meaning to communicate?
It was what was written on, I mean, it's a quote, it's what would have been on the actual document.
Okay. But what was your understanding of what that meant for us people who don't understand HR lingo?
I, I'm not sure what you're...
Witness doesn't understand your question, Mr. Norwood. Can you clarify?
Okay. All right, let's go to the next. It says, after a review, I recommend that the position be declared supernumerary, right?
Correct.
Meaning unnecessary.
Correct.
Meaning a waste of government dollars, right?
Correct.
All right. And then it says, the duties listed on the requisition seem to be in line with the duties already being performed by Executive Assistant Two Heather Taylor, right?
Yes.
All right. And then it goes further, it says, in addition, the duties appear to be primarily a copy of the duties that existed under the former Deputy Director, and I don't have to mention her name, right?
Correct.
All right. It says, important to note that there is some history behind this position. Upon the current mayor's appointment, she requested, who is the she?
Yeah, I mean, the mayor in this case.
Okay, that's, we're just trying to clarify, because I don't want to assume. So you say, it was important to note that there is some history, and you're explaining the history. And you say upon, quote, upon the current mayor's appointment, we're talking about Mayor Jones, right?
Correct.
She requested, meaning the mayor, right?
Yes.
That Ms. Taylor be present, provisionally appointed to the position of Deputy Director of Public Safety, right?
Correct.
So she interceded directly in order to make this happen for Ms. Taylor, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it says.
Is that, well, that's what you said, right?
Yeah, that was my understanding of what occurred.
Right. And is it common for the mayor to reach over in personnel and navigate individual appointments in the system?
Objection, mischaracterizes his testimony.
Sustained.
Okay, let's get back to your statement. At the time, the previous Director of Personnel advised her office that Ms. Taylor did not meet the minimum requirements of the position, right?
Correct.
And that's what you assessed, that we had a person being pushed through by the mayor who didn't even meet the minimum qualifications, right?
So it wasn't my, that was my understanding of the situation, it wasn't my, I didn't make the assessment or wasn't involved with it.
Right, right. Well, who made the assessment that she didn't meet the minimum qualification?
It would have been the, the talent acquisition section that I'm not involved in.
And that's what prompted you to write this, because your understanding was that she didn't meet those qualifications, correct?
My purpose of writing it was to say that the position should be supernumerary, that you don't need the position that already existed and a new position.
She didn't meet the qualifications, right? That's what you said.
This is noted, yeah, that's trying to give the history of what I understood the history to be, yes.
And that history that you understood was that she didn't meet those qualifications? Can we agree with that?
Correct.
Okay. And then we say, as a result, she was unable to be provisionally appointed to the Deputy Director position, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the mayor wanted her in, she didn't meet those qualifications, correct?
Correct.
And then it goes further, it says, the Director of Personnel advised that the deputy, that the Department of Public Safety could trade the Deputy Director of Public Safety position in their budget for an Executive Assistant Two and provisionally appoint Ms. Taylor to that position. That's a mouthful. Could you unpack that for us?
So, again, this is not something that I was involved in, but yeah, my understanding from the, the section was that, that was, the response was told that, that you have that position, you can exchange that position for an Executive Assistant Two, and then she would meet those requirements for that position.
Why would one exchange a position? What, what's happening here? I mean, that seems kind of odd to me, but...
It happens all the time. I, I mean...
Your Honor, I mean, we have gotten very far afield into...
I, I agree with that. I agree with the, we're getting far afield, however, it's, we're not going to cut it off at this particular point in time, because I think it's necessary to put in context what's already in evidence. So to hear the context of the whole thing, I'm going to overrule the objection because it's, it's still... I'm gonna overrule the objection, because it's, it's still relevant to that degree.
What is a provisional appointment?
It's a type of appointment that's used when there isn't a list for a position.
Okay, so if there's no list, who makes the provisional appointment?
The appointing authority.
In this case, it would be the mayor?
Um, or the, the Director of Public Safety.
Well, why is the mayor involved if it's, if, if the Director of Public Safety is the appointing authority? That's what you just indicated, right?
Right.
So why is the mayor involved when the Director of Public Safety is the appointing authority?
Honestly, I don't know, because, um, that isn't something that I was involved in. This is a secondhand account of my understanding of the situation, uh, so I don't know what is the standard.
Well, let's assume the mayor was involved.
Okay.
Okay, and we, we can ask her about that when she testifies. Is that unusual when you have the appointing authority? Why would the mayor get involved when the appointing authority is the person that would make that call, in this case, the Director of Public Safety?
I, I don't know what is unusual or not, I, that is not something that I'm normally involved in.
Nothing you have seen before. Are you aware of other situations where the mayor sought to make provisional appointments based upon the lack of employment lists for positions?
So, again, like, these are not something that I'm normally...
Right, but I mean, what you normally have seen in the era, the time during the Mayor Jones era, has she been involved in, her, her or her staff been involved in efforts to place provisional appointments where there was no, uh, employment list?
I, I don't know.
You don't know, as you sit here today?
Yeah.
Except this situation here.
Again, it's just not something I'm involved in, so it's not, I don't know, it's not my area.
But you wrote this for a reason, why did you write it? You just didn't have anything to do that day?
No, my, my reason was to try to say that a position was unnecessary. It wasn't to speak to political interference or the mayor's involvement. This was just a recounting of my understanding, um, from conversations within the department of people that were involved of what, um, may have occurred. But my point was really just to talk about the part of the process that I had involvement in.
Okay, so we had this exchange, and Ms. Taylor was provisionally appointed, is that right?
To the EA two.
According to your memo.
Your Honor, I wanna, I wanna note another objection, that this is, you know, now, we're, I mean, we're covering confidential personnel records of folks who aren't even involved in this matter, you know, former employees and things like that, those are confidential records, and, uh, we've already gone deep into them.
It was admitted, he didn't object to confidential records until we start getting into the meat, so that objection is waived.
I, I don't think it's waived, um, so, uh, and I do think, Mr. Norwood, I gave you a lot of leeway here, but we are far afield, so the objection at this point to the rest of the document, which I don't see anything in there, uh...
Well, what it says is that...
Well, I know what it says, I can read it, but I'm just...
I mean, there's two more paragraphs, and I'll be done.
I think the court is, is sustaining the objection.
I don't think the court has ruled yet.
I'm reading what it says, so I can try to see whether it sheds any further light on anything that's relevant.
And that last sentence on the second paragraph in particular, the, the first paragraph on page two, that last line is, is essential, and I want to explore that.
All right, I, I don't think it's relevant to any issues in this case, so the objection to the last two paragraphs is sustained.
Well, Your Honor, we're...
Sustained.
Can I say this, that the reference to fiscal irresponsibility involving this placement...
Reference to the last two paragraphs is sustained.
Fair enough, all right, now... There's a note on the front of it, do you know what that's about?
It appears to be a note to Deputy Director, Brian Beckelman, guessing from...
Let me object, the question was, do you know what the note is about?
Yes, that's what is the question.
No, I, I mean...
You don't know, you're not. All right, now, I think you've talked about how you got involved with this matter, and it was based upon the fact that Ms. Bianca Lambert came to you, right?
Correct.
And then, there was a meeting, I think you described, with the director and Ms. Lambert, right?
Yes.
And then, Ms. Lambert gave you some details, you weren't, you don't have any firsthand knowledge of any of this stuff, right?
Correct.
You're just hearing about it for the first time, right?
Correct.
And, first of all, the, this, this policy involving vehicle use, where's that located?
Um, it's online, I think it's on our website, um, as well as the, um, there are several places online. I, I have a hard copy in my office that I have next to me, but it's available.
And why do you have a hard copy next to you?
I like to have all policies, um, just in case, to, to have basic knowledge.
And you've collected those policies over an eighteen-year timeframe, is that right?
I mean, I think that was given as soon as I came into, to class and comp, um, so I've had it since then.
When was that, when, when did you first receive it?
Uh, when I first became the manager of the Classification and Compensation Section, um, have lots of documents, and I, you know, had access to them as soon as I was within that section.
You said you had access, what do you mean by that?
The hard copies were all there already, there's a lot of paper within that section, historical records and things.
And if you wanted to find it online, where would you go?
I think it's on our webpage, the Department of Personnel.
Okay, and when, when was that added to the page?
That I do not know.
Okay, and when was the policy, you know when the policy became effective?
It's been effective for a while, but no, I don't know the date.
All right, all right, and are you aware of anyone being disciplined as a result of violation of that policy?
I wouldn't know that, no.
So you don't, you haven't heard of anything?
No, it's not something I would know.
Well, are you aware of situations where you've, it's been reported individuals were in violation of that policy?
I mean, not, not that I, it's not something that I would have been involved in, so it's not something I would have followed.
Well, have you seen public reports about improper use?
I mean, there, there's always reports of things with the vehicle policies, there's been over the years, but it's not something that I've, like, taken particular interest in or read too far into.
So there's always reports of those vehicle policies, let's take a look at some of those reports. If we could put up...
I'm gonna object to putting up of any exhibits prior to their admission at this point.
Do you, you're aware of a situation where, when the mayor was the treasurer, Elliot David Davis, interview of her regarding her vehicle usage?
And I object to the relevancy, it is completely irrelevant to whether or not the Director of Personnel used the city vehicle in violation of the policy.
Sustained.
Okay, and to your knowledge, you're not aware of anybody who's been disciplined for that, correct?
I mean, I wouldn't be, no.
So that's a no?
Correct.
Okay, and let's go then to, you were interviewed, I believe, as part of this investigation, correct?
The, the Director investigation, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we recounted our, um, story to, to Sarah Baker.
Okay, and you prepared your own summary of the events, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, turn to the big binder, number twenty-eight. If you could. Tab twenty-eight.
Okay.
Uh, and this, it appears to be a report, it says, "Investigation of Malfeasance", do you see that?
Yes.
And then it reflects a meeting with you, Bianca Lambert, Sarah Baker, and who else was in that meeting?
I mean, that's all that's listed.
I'm sorry?
They said that's all that's listed, Sarah, Bianca, and me.
Was, uh, Mr. Jared Boyd in that meeting?
I don't recall, but I don't think so.
Okay, well, let's go through it. What initiated that meeting?
This was the meeting referenced in the initial, um, questioning when we reported the, the situation.
Okay, and the third bullet point says, "Anthony alleged to Bianca that his reallocation to EA two occurred because of the need for his silence on the trip to Jefferson City", do you see that?
Let me just object, so this witness did not prepare, um, this document, uh, so you're, so you're just reading, it was hearsay, and it hasn't been admitted into evidence.
Well, it's your document, and it has your base data.
But it's not his document.
All right, let me ask it a different way. Did you communicate, in that meeting, was there a discussion about whether or not Anthony alleged to Bianca that his reallocation to EA two occurred because of the need to silence, need for his silence on the trip to Jefferson City? You see that?
Yes.
Did that come up during that meeting?
I believe so.
And you debunked that, didn't you?
I don't know that I debunked it, I said that I wasn't, so, I, I think Bianca was, was, that was her feelings of the matter, I believe, I said I couldn't say whether that was true or not.
That was her feeling about what Anthony was feeling? Or did Anthony say that that was what he was feeling when he talked to Bianca about her feelings?
So I believe he may have communicated in some way to her, but I'm not certain of that fact. Um, but, yeah, I, I think that the sentiment was that she also believed that to be true, that, that his reallocation was a result of, um, him, you know, or trying to make him quiet about what had occurred.
Okay, and then, let's go down, bullet point number five, it says, "John", and that John is you, right?
Yeah.
"John confirms that EA two position allocation had been in the works for several months prior to the alleged incident".
Right, I, I definitely brought up that we'd had a conversation, and that's why I wasn't certain of the relationship, so there, there had been, it had been brought up, I think, several times, um, it was brought up, um, towards the end of June, um, and I, I had written a email to the Director and gave my opinion on the matter.
Right.
Um, and, um, then, then this occurred July fourth, so, a, a, after the June email, the Director agreed that, uh, I think she said that the timing wasn't right or something to that effect, to do it.
Okay.
So that, that was where I was in the whole thing, I, I couldn't say that it was certainly connected because there was already conversations.
Okay, that was your belief, that's why you reported it, right?
Correct.
All right, your belief was that there was no real connection, because it was already in the works.
It, so, I can't say that there wasn't a real connection, I could not confirm that that was what it was, because there was enough other things that it, it could have been unrelated.
Okay, all right, and is it common, based upon your dealings with the Director, for her to rely on her staff, people like you, people like Anthony, in order to understand protocol?
Can you ask that, sorry, can you ask that again?
Is it common for Director Sonia Jenkins-Gray to rely on subordinates like you and Mr. Byrd to clarify processes in the city?
Yeah, I mean, we have conversations and, and try to explain, um, yeah, and, and I think that's what I tried to do in the, the email in June, of, of kind of how reallocations are supposed to occur and, um, the rationale for doing them, and, and why I didn't feel like it was appropriate at that time in this situation.
So she was pushing forward, and you were saying, "Maybe not", is that a fair statement?
Yes.
All right, so it wasn't her saying it's not the right time, it sounded like you were saying it's not the right time, right?
She agreed by the end of the, of the correspondence.
Because she's relying on you and your assessment and your judgment, right?
Correct.
Based on your eighteen years of...
She didn't overrule me, yes.
Right, and based upon her eighteen years of experience, right?
Hopefully, yes.
And she could have overruled you, because the buck stops with her on that front, right?
Correct.
But she relied on you and deferred to your experience, right?
Correct.
And that's common in terms of what she would do, not having worked in city government before, we can agree with that, can't we?
I think she does both, I mean, she overrules and, and she agrees, so, yes.
Well, ultimately, she has to make the final call.
She, she does her job.
Okay, she does her job, right, okay, so now, let's, uh... Let's go to that big binder tab ten. Let me start by asking, have you seen that document before? You can take your time and read it if you need to.
And Your Honor, while you're reviewing this document, I would just lodge an objection, um, as, you know, this document contains, uh, information about employees, it's, um, and those records and information, uh, personnel records are typically confidential. I think the rules, the evidence you're hearing rules for this indicate that, um, personnel information for, for employees who are not part of this, um, matter, uh, are, are not allowed.
It was, it's already been admitted by my notes, number one, but I'm not gonna talk about anyone other than, and I didn't, with the Director, anyone other than Mr. Byrd. Plus, it's, it's...
Salary information is...
Salary information is public, as counsel knows, years of service information is public, and classification is public.
The rules, I'm just saying that the rules say that they, they deal with, uh, information of personnel and employees who are not party to proceeding, and that that information is generally not allowed.
It has been admitted already, so, and you didn't object on that grounds, but I'm not gonna talk about names of these people, and I didn't, in the context of examining the Director. The only question I asked him is, has he seen the document before? So we're not even there yet, if he hasn't seen it, then we can move on to the next document.
I wanted to preview for the commission that this is an objectionable line of questioning, and the information that could, they could potentially get into relates to other employees who are not subject to this, uh, matter.
And could we not cure that by redacting in the document, in the record? So in other words, prepare a copy of the document where we take a heavy black marker and we draw a line through so that the names of any particular individual cannot be read?
We can, we can do that offline. I'm not going to go into, the only thing I'm trying to figure out now is if you've seen this document before.
Right, so, but I'm saying so that it is not a problem if it's ever in the record of any violation of any provisions regarding confidentiality regarding any other employee. That, that can be done, right? This is respondents.
We will swap out.
Exhibit, you'll swap that out by redacting that.
Redacted, the names with the exception of Mr. Bird.
All right, and so then provide that to the staff so that they can make sure they have all the commissioners have a copy and that the staff has the copy of the redacted document and removes and destroys any, or if you take them from, that's fine, but whatever, so that they're not in the record. All right.
Yes.
Make sure we do that, okay? So with that, the question to the witness was, do you recognize the document?
I don't believe I've seen it, no.
Okay, fair enough. That saves us a lot of time. Let's take a look at same binder.
But we want it redacted in any case.
Yes, for sure. My team's on it.
Okay.
Exhibit eleven, same binder. And I'm going to direct your attention to the email at the bottom. It looks like one dated June twenty, Thursday, June twenty, twenty twenty-four, at eight forty-two PM, to you, right?
Yes.
And eight forty-two PM, that would be after hours, right?
Yes.
Was it common for the director to work after hours, in your experience?
Yeah.
Why, do you know why she did that?
No, I, no, I don't.
Is it fair to say she's not a nine-to-five director?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, yes.
Okay, and this shows that she's at eight forty-two PM, when you're probably about to go to bed, she's sending you an email, right?
Hopefully, in bed, yes.
Okay, all right, and what does this relate to?
This is the same situation we were talking about. Her noting that she believes Anthony has done duties of EA2 for a while and asking my thoughts on it.
Yeah, asking for your views as to whether or not this is proper for her to do.
Correct.
All right. Let's look at then, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my pad. Let's look at number twenty-eight in the binder, that same binder. I'm sorry, not twenty-eight, number twenty-nine of that same binder. And that may be a duplicate copy, so let's skip over that one. And let's go to number thirty-seven.
I don't think I.
Thirty-seven.
I don't think I have thirty-seven.
You don't have thirty-seven?
It stops at thirty-four. That was one of the additional ones that you gave us. So I don't know if it's.
Bear with us, he's going to insert it in the binder.
I guess start with thirty-four. Okay, thank you.
Have you seen respondents exhibit thirty-seven before?
Yes.
What is respondent exhibit thirty-seven?
So this is the same email in the last exhibit, and this is my response to the question.
And without going into weeds on response, what essentially were you saying to her in response?
Saying that I had some concerns about that reallocation, that generally reallocations are just done due to gradual accretion of duties over time, that it's not typical for somebody to be able to accumulate supervisory duties, but because of the unique characteristics of the EA1 and EA2 classifications, that there may be a window for that in this circumstance, but that I didn't believe that Anthony had even been in the position for a year. And we have an admin reg that says that people shouldn't be reallocated. It's our policy of less than a year of those duties. So I encouraged her not to do it at that time.
Okay, and so in reliance on you, she said, "Okay, fine, and I won't, I'm not going to move right now," correct?
Correct.
All right, and there were other individuals, we're not going to talk about names, but outside of Anthony, that she was seeking the same reclassification, correct?
What do you mean?
In, in that, well, let me ask you this. Were you aware that other than Anthony, there were other individuals that the director was seeking to reclassify?
I don't, so she had reclassified other individuals at different times, sometimes without asking, sometimes with asking for the opinion. So I mean, yes, it had occurred. I don't know that at that point in time there were any other ones that were being looked at.
Okay, all right. And then attached to the emails, there's some, it says, third page, says, "City of St. Louis Classification Specifications for EA1," right?
Correct.
And then it looks like there's one for EA2, correct?
Yes.
Was that in the original email, do you know?
I don't know that there was any, I don't think that there was anything attached. I think I just kind of illustrated those differences in my email.
Okay, all right. Now let's go to your statement. Well, no, let's go back to the exhibit, I think it was ten. No, that wasn't it. Hold on, bear with me here. Yes, it's in the wrong, it's ten, but it's in the wrong binder. Let's go to the other binder, exhibit ten. Do you have that?
My statement?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's your statement, correct?
Correct.
And that was a statement you put together at the request of Mr. Boyd and Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I think Sarah had asked.
What was your understanding as to Sarah's role in this investigation?
Just collecting information. I mean, that's what, the reason we brought it forward is we didn't know what the proper channel was, but we didn't want something to end up on us because we didn't disclose something that needed to be looked at. So I thought it was, at that point, just gathering information and facts.
Okay, all right, and I'm sorry to jump around, but in our binder, big binder, we were talking about exhibit twenty-eight, which is the investigative report of sorts, reflecting the meetings that you had with Sarah, in this case, Sarah Bianca, right? And that would have been in the morning on the nineteenth, it looks like, ten AM?
Yeah.
All right, and then there was a second meeting. Were you involved, well, let me ask you this. How many other meetings were you involved in other than this particular meeting? The ten AM meeting on eight nineteen twenty-four?
With the mayor's office?
With Bianca Lambert, Sarah Baker, Jared Boyd, yes, anybody in the mayor's office.
I think there may be one or two other meetings after this meeting.
Are those reflected in this summary?
No.
Do you know why they're not reflected in that summary?
No.
Well, what happened at those meetings, as you're going to recall?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. That's why I was glad that I had my written statement, but it was just more conversation, a general conversation, from what I recall about just the department and, yeah, I don't really remember any details.
When did those additional come, beyond eight nineteen twenty twenty-four?
It would have been the same week, within a day or two.
When did you provide your statement?
So this was on the nineteenth. Well, the written statement probably was like the twenty-first, like I think it was on Wednesday that I submitted that.
Okay, so you submitted it on a Wednesday. Do you know when the pre-termination notice was sent out?
I do not.
All right, so let's go to your statement. And in your statement, you identify, and I don't want to read it all, but you talk about the fact that she was one of your subordinates who reported directly to you, correct?
Correct.
Bianca Lambert.
Correct.
And what were her duties and responsibilities?
She's in charge of the HRS, the records and data personnel record system.
Okay, and and she expressed concern about spreading what she described as gossip, right?
Correct.
And that it wasn't her place to report something that she could not, was she not a part of and couldn't verify, right?
Correct.
And she advised that she told Anthony that if it was true, it was his responsibility to report it, right?
Correct.
Do you know if Anthony ever reported it?
I do not.
Okay. And then she says, quote, "She expressed anger," this is in the bottom of the first paragraph, "she expressed anger and frustration that Anthony had put her in the situation because she was not involved, and he was the one with the duty to report what had occurred." That's what she said, right?
Correct.
And that's what she told you?
Yeah.
And you say, quote, "I agree that it would not be appropriate to report something that she could not substantiate," right?
Correct.
All right, and then she says in the next paragraph, "At various times after this meeting, Bianca has mentioned to me that she was frustrated with Anthony and his behavior," right?
Correct.
"She told me that she was upset that Anthony had involved her at all and questioned his motivation for doing so," right?
Yes.
"She thought that he may have done it in an effort to upset her and cause her stress," right?
Correct.
You know why she suggested that Anthony would have reported this to her to cause her stress? Did she elaborate on that?
No.
Going further, quote, "She also thought that he may have done it to provoke her to report the situation because he did not want to do it himself." You see that?
Yeah.
That's what she told you, right?
Yeah.
All right, it says, "The information seemed to weigh heavily on Bianca's mind as she tried to sort through the truth of the matter versus her responsibility to report what she had been told." She told you that too, right?
I mean, that's my observation, yeah.
Well, that's what she told you, and that's what you wrote, right?
What line are you?
The one I just read.
That it weighed heavily?
Yeah, yeah, that, that sentence. That's what she told you, and that's what you wrote.
I wrote that, it, like, this is my statement of the observation. It seemed to weigh heavily on her, from my observation.
And then you go further and say, "At one point during conversation, Bianca mentioned that she had consulted people that she knew with legal backgrounds to ask for their advice," right?
Yeah.
"She informed me that they told her to stay away from Anthony."
Yes.
Did she say why the legal people were saying, "Stay away from Anthony"?
She didn't, I mean, the suggestion was that he was just, you know, a bad player and to distance herself from him in general.
Okay. And you say, "On July third, I was copied on an email regarding this classification issue regarding Anthony," right?
Correct.
And do you know if during this trip to Jefferson City, there was a discussion between her and Mr. Bird about the, his inquiry about the status of the reclassification?
I don't believe the director and I ever talked about what occurred on that, that trip.
Okay, all right, and the email you said you were copied on was dated July third, right?
Correct.
And you know when she's, where she was when she sent that email?
I do not.
Do you know if she was on the way to Jeff City when she sent that email?
I do not. I, I never knew when the Jeff City trip occurred.
Okay. Let's go to the second page of the document. It's that numbered pages. And I'm going to direct your attention to the second full paragraph. You say, "On eight fifteen twenty twenty-four, Bianca informed me that she was having a panic attack," right?
Correct.
She said that she had talked to Sarah Baker and informed her that she needed out of the Department of Personnel either by transfer to ITSA or resignation, right?
Correct.
She said that Sarah asked her to give her until the end of the day to find a resolution. Did you see that, see that?
Yes.
And that's what she told you. You didn't have any firsthand knowledge of that either, right?
Right.
All right, and you say, "At around two PM, she informed you that she was going to take a medical leave and go home for the day," right?
Correct.
And I, I guess the issue regarding whether or not she's sick and whether or not she's going to leave, that was because she reported to you, and she was in your line of supervision.
Right.
Okay, and you were being kept in the loop by her as to where she was emotionally during that particular time, right?
Right, physically, in this case.
All right.
Physically, that she was feeling sick, in this case.
All right, let's go to the third paragraph. It says, "At the meeting with the director," and this is the meeting between the three you talked about, right?
Yeah.
"Bianca stated that she needed to talk first." Is that accurate?
Yeah, the director tried to lead the conversation. Bianca stopped her and said that she needed to talk first.
And what, it looks like, and there's some she's in this, what she said. She said that she, we're talking about Bianca, right?
Correct.
She said that she had lied to Sarah Baker about the reason that she was planned, she planned on quitting, right?
Correct.
So she admitted she lied to the investigators, right?
No.
Okay.
So this, this is prior to any sort of reporting or investigation. This was when she was feeling sick and deciding that she needed to quit. So that was a reference to the conversations she had with Sarah at that point about quitting.
So when did that conversation take place? In the relationship to this meeting you had with the director about the trip to Jefferson City?
So my understanding, it was earlier in the day, on the, the same day, on the fifteenth, that she had had, told Sarah that, you know, "I can't do this anymore, and I'm either going to resign or," and I don't know if she asked about it, so, or Sarah suggested to give her time to try to find a place for her. She didn't want Bianca to leave the city.
But she admitted to you and the director that she lied to Sarah Baker, right?
About the reason that she was, you know, feeling sick.
Yeah, she lied about the reason she was feeling sick, right?
Correct.
Did she say why she lied about that to Sarah Baker?
I think she was trying to keep this situation, the story that she had been told.
Well, I don't, you're speculating now, right? I mean, is this what she told you?
No, I mean, that was my assumption.
Okay, well, let's not make any assumptions because we're in a court of law and we want to get the facts. Did she tell you why she lied to Sarah Baker?
I think in that story, I mean, in that telling, that's what she was saying here, that she had lied and that the story was the real reason that she had, had been feeling bad.
And what was the real reason?
Keeping this story in, not knowing if there was any truth to it, kind of the, it weighed heavily on her to have to, it was one of two things. Either Anthony was just really bad and, and, you know, trying to mess with her, or this had actually occurred, and either one of them is not, does not. does not engender positive feelings.
She told you she had problems with working with Anthony ultimately, didn't she?
She told me that she had problems working with the director and Anthony, that she had realized that anytime she had come in contact with either of them since finding out about this, it was making her sick.
Okay. And she also told you that Anthony was a liar?
Yeah.
Right? He was a liar.
Yeah, in general, she felt that he was an unreliable source and that, but specified that there's always usually some truth to what he says, but...
Some truth to what he said.
Correct.
And some untruth to what he said.
Correct.
And so you have to discern what's fact and what's fiction, right?
Correct.
All right. And with respect to Dr. Byrd, she, do you know if she ever apprised anyone that she couldn't work with Anthony anymore?
I don't know that, I don't know if she did or didn't.
Now, you understood they were friends. You understood that, right?
I don't know that, what do you mean by friends?
Well, they hung out together. You knew that, right?
I knew pre, they had in the past, but I don't know that she would look at him, I won't speak for him.
Yeah, yeah, but you, well, let's talk about what you know. I'm not going to ask you to speculate about...
Yeah, I wouldn't consider, like, my observations is not that they were friends at that current...
What was your observation in terms of they hung out together? You knew that.
That they had in the past, that I don't know that that was a current thing.
At this point, I want to object. I mean, I don't know where...
Ask and answer. Try that one. Ask and answer sustained. Okay, next question.
All right. So so ultimately was Bianca who blew the whistle on this incident to the mayor's office, is your understanding?
Yeah, I mean, I was with her when, when she reported. It was, you know, we, she told the director and I think she, well, I know she was expecting that the director would say, no, it's all not true and deny it. And then, you know, she was looking at that as, she was leaving the city anyway, and I think she described it to me as a gift to the director, that the director could finally see who Anthony is and, and, you know, what he was doing.
Which was what? What was your understanding as to what she was trying to communicate with respect to what Anthony was doing?
Well, if this story was completely made up, then the director would have, you know, firsthand knowledge of what he was do, like, that he was telling these sorts of stories.
And she admitted that she took the trip, right?
So she didn't deny anything that was said in the, the meeting?
Right, well, she didn't deny it, and you don't know what she told Boyd, Mr. Boyd and Sarah. You don't know that?
No, I deliberately wanted to, to stop her from disclosing more because as soon as I knew that there was personal stuff, I didn't want her to feel any discomfort.
So you respected her privacy and you didn't want to know all of the details?
Correct.
The gossip and all of that stuff?
Yeah.
You wanted to remove yourself from that?
Yeah.
As a professional, correct?
Correct.
One moment, I think I may be done. During any of these meetings, did Bianca state in front of you that she and Anthony were in a city vehicle and had been drinking?
No.
I'm sorry?
During, no, not during these, not that I recall.
Is there any time you recall her mentioning to you that she and Anthony had been out in a city vehicle and Anthony had been drinking?
So the, she told me at one point, a story of going out with Anthony, but I don't believe it was during any of these times, but...
Okay.
Let me object. I mean, this is, he's, I guess he's asking the witness to opine on someone else's character.
I'm not opining about it. I'm asking him...
Irrelevant to the matter under review? What?
The objection to the question and the answer is sustained.
I have no further, well, let me see. I have no further questions at this time.
All right, that ends the cross-examination. Do you have any redirect?
Yes.
Redirect, okay, and start.
All right.
We're almost to our lunch break. Hopefully you'll finish by then.
I mean, yeah, I plan to.
Eleven fifty-six, go ahead.
Okay, let me ask you this. So, so just to clarify, Sarah, Sarah and Jared didn't bring you and Bianca into this situation, correct? You guys reported to them?
We went to them, yes.
You went to them, okay.
Correct.
And you understand that we're here today because of the violation of the vehicle policy, right?
Correct.
The use of a city vehicle to take a trip out of town for personal reasons on, on work time?
Yes.
Do you think that's a violation?
Well, let me object. It calls for speculation.
Sustained.
Are you, is it a violation of city policy?
Let me object. It calls for a legal conclusion and speculation.
Sustained.
Is that something you would have done?
Objection irrelevant as to what he would have done.
So you mean to tell me, okay.
Am I going to tell you what?
Never mind.
Good. Because you don't want to hear what I would have told you.
So, okay, so you want to, so you want to chastise me about taking up all this time?
No, you just didn't want to hear.
On direct, I spent twenty minutes.
You want to hear it?
On cross, he spent well over an hour.
Seven, we're going to take our lunch recess.
That's fine. We can take our break.
That, I appreciate you proving. Mr. Harris. At any rate, eleven fifty-seven, we, the attorneys and the commissioners have, did not finish last night and came back this morning and did not finish before we opened up the room with the legal matters we had to deal with, one of the items that's going to be offered in evidence later that we had hoped, the video deposition that we had hoped to play first thing this morning. That's going to take us some time to go through. So we are going to take our, now, we have not finished with Mr. Understall, so when we come back, you need to be back in the witness chair for Mr. Harris's redirect, all right? But what we're going to do is take a longer lunch recess for everybody else while we're going to take a shorter one and then come back here. So for the attorneys, we'll be back here at one o'clock and we'll resume what we were doing this morning as far as dealing with the various objections, trying to get that video deposition in a position where it can be played without interruption.
Yes.
So we'll do that from one. Hopefully we'll finish before two. At any rate, and then at two o'clock, we'll resume with Mr. Understall, Mr. Harris' continued questions, okay?
Yes.
So with that, everybody go to lunch now and then we'll come back at two o'clock for the public hearing. Okay, we are on the record, back after lunch break. Witness, the witness stand's already been sworn in, so Mr. Harris, you were in your examination. You may resume.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Understall, you testified earlier, you know, kind of about the demands and the challenges of the job of director of personnel.
Yeah.
You testified that, you know, part of the reason for the challenges is the change is hard.
Yeah.
And tho, and those are some of the reasons that, you know, this director has faced challenges as well, right?
Agreed.
And it, it's not unusual that that is a challenge, that that change is hard in a job like this.
Yeah.
And you're, you expressed that you were glad that you didn't get that position.
Yeah, there was definitely some relief to, to not go through the pressures of that job.
Because you would have faced similar challenges.
Correct.
Because of the job, not because of who you are.
Right.
And, and speaking of change being hard, I mean, the prior director had been there how long?
It was like seventeen years, I think, something like that.
Okay, all right. So going from a seventeen-year, ten-year director to someone new is a big change.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I just want to clear some stuff up. There was a lot of questioning on cross-examination about, you know, this term political interference. You remember that?
Yes.
I think you said that that's a term that people just sometimes use.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely used a lot, especially in personnel.
Not generally, not generally a term you use?
No.
Okay. And in that memo, I think it was Exhibit forty, you spent a lot of time on that, and I take it you weren't thinking about political interference when you drafted that memo?
No, my intent with that memo was to talk about a supernumerary position. Wasn't to get into what is or isn't political interference.
Okay. You also spent, you also testified earlier that, you know, the director relies heavily on her team. Is that right?
Yeah.
Relies on you for things.
Yeah, I think she goes to the people with the experience in the various areas.
Right. So did, did, I want to make, clarify, did the, did the director come to you to ask you whether taking this city vehicle on a personal trip was a violation?
No, I don't think we ever had a conversation about the, the vehicle policy.
Do you wish she had come to you?
Yes. I, I think, I think I said that to her after the initial meeting that, that we had, is I just wished that she had come to me instead.
Why?
So I don't claim to, to know everything, but I, I try not to give answers if I don't know, and I try to to research and find the source material so that she has all the information she needs to make those decisions. So I just felt that whatever the situation was with Mr. Byrd, that I would have been more thorough when answering that question.
Okay, all right. Well, just answering what question?
If, if, if she could take a city vehicle
Okay.
to do a personal. So when we had the conversation with her, I believe she indicated that Anthony had said that it was okay. So I wished it would have been me instead of Anthony that she asked.
If she had asked you that, what would you have said?
I would have instinctively thought, no, you can't do that, but I would have went to the policy and brought that to her and showed her that.
Okay. All right. Thanks. You were shown emails on cross-examination about the director's request to reclassify Anthony Byrd?
Yeah.
I think those emails were June twenty, June twenty-one. You remember that?
Yes.
And so that was around the time that she had come to you about, you know, wanting to reclassify him?
Yeah.
And you advised against it?
Correct.
And then, just maybe a week and a half later, she sends an email to the, email directing the compensation manager to reclassify him?
Correct.
So June twenty and twenty-one, you have the email exchange, you tell her, you advise against it, right?
Right.
Not, not even two weeks later, she sends an email, we're going to do it.
Yes.
And that was on July the third?
Yes.
And the compensation manager was confused by that, wasn't he?
He was. He came to my office and, so we'd had a meeting maybe a week, within a week before that meeting. And in that meeting, it was about a different topic. It was about a assignment differential for Anthony. But in that conversation, the director had made some comments critical of his performance, saying that he wasn't doing a good job.
When was that?
It was within probably a week of the July third email. So he, he came to my office and expressed concern, saying, why would she do this? She just said that he wasn't a good performer. This email specifically mentioned performance as well as one of the reasons for the reallocation. So my response to that was, well, reallocations aren't about performance, it's about duties, and I'm not sure why that comment was in there, but I don't necessarily think that those, what, my opinion was it shouldn't influence a reallocation.
So the bottom line is manager, the, the compensation manager was confused, you were confused?
I, I acknowledge that it was odd that that comment was in there because the duties was really what the reallocation should be about.
You had, you had advised her against it, she had raised concerns about his performance recently, and then on July third, she's trying to promote him?
Correct.
Do you think she was trying to buy his silence?
Let me object. It calls for speculation.
Sustained.
Okay. No further questions?
Now, this is redirect?
That was redirect, yeah.
Recross, you would need to, any objection to a short recross?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why we need to...
Need to, can you cite any extraordinary circumstances in the redirect that causes the need to recross?
Well, yeah, in that he essentially was able to get back into the very letter that the court, the tribunal said we couldn't talk about, and so I think by doing that, he's opened up the door to us talking about it.
Specifically, what letter are you talking about?
This is the letter regarding the mayor and political interference.
All right. That's not the reason, do you have any, because I don't, I don't think that form of the questions, the answers that were given really went into anything that wasn't already done. So I don't think it raises any
Well, fair enough.
additional information.
Okay. All right, well, then what other area relates to this reclassification issue that you just touched on, and this will be like two, three questions?
Go ahead and ask them. I think it'll be shorter than dealing with the objection on, on the rule on recross. So this will be an exception if you can keep it very short.
Very short. Now, now, so I'm just trying to make sure we all understand. You testified earlier that it was her call in terms of how, to do what she did and she deferred to you initially, correct?
Yeah, she asked my thoughts on it.
Right, and she was reclassifying a bunch of employees. We already talked about that, right?
Yeah, she had reclassified others.
All right. And you don't know anything as you sit here today to suggest that her decision had anything to do with anything associated with this charge and this trip? Isn't that a fair statement?
Objection. It calls for speculation. Same objection he gave.
No, I said, he doesn't know. If he doesn't know, he doesn't know. You're not speculating if he doesn't know. If he says, I do know, then that's a different question.
He objected to my last question. I mean, he's asking basically the same question.
All right. Go ahead, just state your question.
Yes. As you sit here today, you can't, you don't know whether or not that reclassification of Dr. Byrd, which started months earlier, had anything to do with the trip to Jefferson City, isn't that correct?
All right, that, I think that was asked and answered, covered on your original cross, wasn't it?
No, not that question. And that's it. I'll be done.
If my memory's wrong, I'll, I'll, go ahead. Do you understand the question?
If I know that those two were related, I, I do not.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, with that then, you can step down. That's all for this witness. And next is, next witness or whatever Mr. Harris has next.
I think at this time, we're ready to...
Play the video?
Yeah, we're ready to play the video. We just need to get it set up.
All right, so this is going to be, in lieu of the witness appearing here live and in person, the videotaped deposition that was taken of the witness, Anthony Byrd, Dr. Anthony Byrd.
Well, before we start, I'm just trying to make sure the timing's right. My understanding is you've got about an hour and a half, and we have an hour eight.
Total to play, so that's two and a half hours.
That's
We have to stop at four.
Three and a half, oh, two and a half, two and a half, yeah. So
Two and a half.
Two and a half.
That takes us well past four. We're going to have to break at an appropriate time before four. So if there's a logical, you know, point in the deposition where it finishes one topic before it goes on to another, we're going to have to stop it there.
Yes. Understood. Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm going to pull her on this side. Oh, yeah, go ahead. They're not starting yet. And as you all heard in the audience, this is going to be about two and a half hours total. Well, it won't be quite that long, but from now until four o'clock or right before four. So if anybody in the audience has an urgent need to use the restroom, please be quiet. Do it quietly if you have to get up and step out or what. Do it quietly if you have to get up and step out or whatever, alright? Don't disturb the ability, but on the other hand, I don't wanna hold anybody in if they have to go, so to speak. Anyway. I'll just point out, see, the other thing I'm succeeding in doing is boring our audience to death. It's smaller and smaller. I don't even see other reporters.
Full screen?
Yeah, tell us whenever you're ready to start.
Really?
Yeah.
And you just make sure the sound is on.
Sure.
Yep, it's all the way up. We're, we're ready, well.
Alright, may proceed.
Yeah.
This is in effect a witness called by the appointing authority, Mr. Harris.
Okay, we're now on the record. Deposition of Anthony Byrd, today's date is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the time is nine twenty-two AM. This is the case of. She's out with this where the testimony you're about to give in this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Thank you.
Looks like there's a sound issue.
I just heard it a little while ago.
Yeah. It's playing, but there's no sound.
I think it's still buffering.
That's buffer.
Yeah, let it buffer all the way.
So, that was, that was, that was the play?
That blue line should be buffering, and then it will start playing.
Yeah.
Let it buffer all the way.
We're gonna send you her bill. So, you hit the plate?
Yep. So, that's.
That's just, it's like a, just click.
Yes. It's playing, but the sound isn't going there. And that's the next clip?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's not buffering, it's just not giving any sound. Yeah.
To the laptop?
If I disconnected it, yeah. But I, I don't.
Let's try, let's try, back out of Bobby, let's try, probably connect it, man.
Okay, we're now on the record, this is the video deposition of Anthony Byrd. Today's date is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the time is nine twenty-two AM. This is the case of. She's out with this where the testimony you're about to give in this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Thank you.
Well, maybe we should take a break and see if we can figure out what.
Alright, we'll just stop recording until we can get this working. We're ready then, may proceed.
Position of Anthony Byrd, today's date is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the time is nine twenty-two AM. This is the case of. She's out with this where the testimony you're about to give in this cause to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Anthony Byrd Senior.
Okay. And subpoenaed to appear in a hearing before the Civil Service Commission in this matter on Monday, January the sixth of twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
As I understand it, you have a pre-planned trip that day out of town?
Yes.
Okay. So, or, you know, your current work background, what, what's your current position?
My civil service title is Executive Assistant Two.
Right, and who are you employed by?
The city of St. Louis.
And as Executive Assistant Two, can you just describe for us, you know, what that means, what are your duties and responsibilities?
In my functioning title, as Chief Administrative Officer of the Department of Personnel, I have direct oversight of some of the administrative functions of the department. I manage the FMLA team, which administratively manages FMLA for the entire city of St. Louis. I also manage the administrators to have of the Civil Service Commission. And then, through restructuring of our department, the director has added an accountant and then a public information officer.
Okay, and how long have you been in that position?
This is my second stint in the Department of Personnel. So, I think a year and a half or somewhere around there, maybe a little bit longer.
Okay, can you take us through a little bit?
Four years at the airport, and I did a lateral transfer back to the Department of Personnel. And after a period of time, I promoted to the, I promoted to an EA one there and was ultimately reclassified to EA two.
And so, and then who's, who is your direct supervisor?
The Director of Personnel.
Okay, is that Ms. Sonia Jenkins Gray?
Yes.
How long have, has she been your direct supervisor?
Since I returned back to Department of Personnel, so a little bit over a year and a half.
Okay, alright, so somewhere in twenty twenty-three, late, late twenty-two or early twenty-three, something?
Yes.
Okay. So, I want to direct your attention now to July the third of twenty twenty-four, and ask you if on that date, you had occasion to go on a trip with your supervisor, the Director of Personnel, to Jefferson City, Missouri?
Yes.
Okay, then I want to ask you about that, I want to ask you first off, how it came to be that you and the Director went on this trip? Tell me how, how that happened?
So, that morning, I did get a couple calls from the Director, but we didn't talk on the phone. And ultimately, as I was pulling into the garage, I got a call from her and then a text, and she asked me to reserve her vehicle.
You were pulling into the garage where?
The municipal garage.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
She asked me to reserve her vehicle, I responded back and said, okay. She asked me if it was okay to take the vehicle to Jefferson City. I said it was okay. And I reserved the vehicle, went into the office, I had a full scheduled day, began to do what I needed to do, then I got a text asking would I go along with her? Like, okay, so finish up some things in the office. Through the course of that time, her and I did talk through a combination of phone calls and text messages. I asked her what time she wanted to leave, she said like ten o'clock. I think I left the office close to about ten o'clock, there was a situation that happened with the employee that I walked into and that morning I had to address that because the Director was not there. So, once I was able to de-escalate the employee, get things I needed to get, I asked the Director, like, what I need to wear, professional attire, those kind of things, she responded back. She told me I did need to wear professional, but ignoring my Director and how she always present herself, I still went by the house and grabbed something just in case. And then proceeded to get her running the traffic and getting her, communicated that to her, and then arrived at her house.
Okay, well, let me ask you, so you, you mentioned that you, you communicated with her via text message as well as by, by phone?
Yes.
Okay, I want to show you, I want to show you what's been previously marked as Exhibit A. And tell you that this appears to be a copy of text message communications. I should take a look at that and go ahead and whisper it.
Alright, now, throughout this deposition, we're gonna need, for the record, if he's referring to an Exhibit A, we're gonna need the reference as to which exhibit it is in the exhibits, you know, that we have. So, and of course, you're asking, I assume you're asking about respondents, I'm sorry, the Appointing Authority's exhibits, right? So, and A is marked under the tab that you've submitted, are those the only ones you're gonna use?
Yes, Your Honor, so it'll be six, six A, six B, six C.
Okay.
And those will be the ones that show up on the video.
Alright, so then, in the Appointing Authority's binder of exhibits under tab number six, which is Dr. Byrd's deposition, and separate tabs A, B, C, D, and that's it? That's it, just four?
Just four, but we'll only be running to tabs A, B, and C.
And C, so just those three are identified as what's referred to as A, B, and C here in this?
Yes.
Okay, great.
For example, you know, six A will be marked as well as six, as Exhibit A. So, in the deposition, he'll respond, he'll say, I'm looking at Exhibit A.
Correct, correct.
And that'll be six.
Referring to six A in your, in your tab?
Yes.
Right, okay, so with that understanding, I think, now, we, we were on the record for that? Yes, okay, that was on the record, just not the deposition stopped, not the record, okay, go ahead then.
First off, I want to ask you if you recognize it?
I do.
Can you tell us what Exhibit A is?
Exhibit A is text messages between the Director and I.
Okay. So, it looks like, and you recall those, that, that is the text conversation that you had with the Director the morning of July the third?
Yes, with the exception of a few messages missing.
Okay, and tell us about the few messages that, that are missing from those.
Early in the morning, I did get a message prior to the morning, can you give me a card that says, urgent, please call? And then there is a message missing when she did message me and say, not completely city business.
Oh, okay, so, so you had inquired as to whether or not this was, it was gonna be city business, and she told you not completely?
No, I didn't inquire.
Oh, okay, okay, she just told you that it was not completely city business?
Yes.
Okay, any other messages that, that you can recall that are not part of this?
No.
Okay, and, and, and I just want to represent, you know, represent that these, I received these text messages last night, and so you, you understand that, that these are, this is a copy of text messages that, that, you know, I didn't previously have until last night?
I'm aware.
Okay, alright. So, this, so there's a, the, the first message on Exhibit A indicates a message at about eight forty-four AM, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where you're saying that Ms. Jenkins Gray was asking you to get a car?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, and there is an indication in the text messages where she seems to be saying maybe she'll get a rental car, rental car?
Yes.
Did you all discuss that?
We didn't discuss it, she just said she, you know, maybe she'll get a rental car, I responded back and I said, yeah.
You said what?
Yeah.
Okay, but ultimately, no one got a rental car?
No.
Alright, you certainly didn't?
No.
And as far as you're aware, she didn't?
No.
Okay, and it says in, in the text messages around eight fifty-six AM that you, you say, I reserved the car? If you flip to the answer.
Yes.
Okay, looks like there's a, a message at ten oh eight AM where you're saying sadly, all the cars are marked, do you see that?
Yes.
And why did you say that?
In my communication with the Director that morning, as I mentioned before, that it was a combination of telephone conversations and text messages, she did ask for a black car. And Directors at her level generally that have a city vehicle don't have a, don't have one that says city on there unless it's like the police chief or fire chief. So, I did inquire if there was a black car available, there wasn't, and so I communicated to her that there wasn't.
Okay, well, so this says the cars are marked, did she ask for an unmarked car or a black car?
She was asking for a car that didn't have the city on there, in a black car.
That did not have the city?
Yeah.
Okay, and did you make any other inquiry about that as to why she was making that request?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, and then you said in here, and you told us that you did in fact reserve the vehicle for the trip?
Yes.
Okay, I want to show you now what's been previously marked as Exhibit B, and represent that it indicates that it's a, it appears to be a copy of a log pertaining to the vehicles at the city garage.
Yes, sir.
Do you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you recognize it?
I do.
Can you go ahead and tell us what Exhibit B is?
This is the log for that vehicle, vehicle number thirty-one, and the number one sixty-two is the identification for that section with the city.
So, then, is that then a copy of the log that you completed to reserve the vehicle that day?
Yes.
Okay. And just kind of looking through the log itself, in the first column, it has date. in the first column, it has date and looks like that's July third, twenty twenty-four, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And did you in fact check it out at or around 10 o'clock a.m.?
Yes.
And it says next, in the next column, expected return of July ten, two thousand twenty-four, do you see that?
Yes.
And so is that the date you were expecting to return the car?
That was the next day that I would be back at work. It was a holiday. In the text message, you will note that I also asked if she would be back by five o'clock or not. Most times when it's a holiday, the city shuts down early, and I wasn't really sure if it would be able to check the car back in. I also knew that I was going to be off coming back from the holiday as well, and so that's why that date was there.
Okay, so you said it was a holiday. You talking about July the fourth?
Yes, sir.
That would have been the day after the trip, is that right?
Yes.
So the day of the trip, July the third, that was in fact a work day though?
It was a work day in which the city did shut down early as customary.
But that was a day though that, that you, you know, you were on duty for the city, is that right?
Yes.
And as you understood it, the director was also on duty for the city that day?
Yes.
Okay, and you were paid for that day?
Yes.
Name, and it has your name, Dr. Anthony Byrd, right?
Yes.
The next column, department number, so one twenty-three, is that the department number for the department of personnel?
Yes, sir.
And then it says in the next column, destination, and it appears to indicate city, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and did you put that there?
Yes, sir.
And tell us why you put city there?
It's customary. Normally, if I rent a car out or something, I just put city, city on there.
Okay, at the point though that you checked the vehicle out, were you aware that the trip was for Jefferson City?
She did tell me that.
Okay, all right, and so would it have, I mean, so it sounds like perhaps it would have been better to go ahead and put Jefferson City there?
It could have. I did communicate that to the municipal garage manager because I understand how they delegate or designate their vehicles. They have fleets of vehicles for local travel, and then they have fleets of vehicle for distance or road travel. So I did communicate with the municipal garage manager that the trip was to go to Jefferson City. And so she provided a vehicle that was designated for long distance travel.
Okay, so there are vehicles designated for long distance travel?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, all right, and then there are some that are just designated for local?
Yes.
Okay. And then it looks like the return time is July ten, twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
And ten thirty, is that, is that what that indicates? That it was returned around ten thirty a.m.? You tell me.
Yes, well, that's when it was checked in. It goes in in the morning time, and when they actually get it to Philadelphia and all that kind of stuff, that's when they put the time on there.
Okay, it looks like the next two columns are the mileage start, mileage end, right?
Yes.
Okay, and who fills that in? Do you fill that in, or do they fill it in at the garage?
Oh, they fill it in, and then the person that checks the mileage and who actually brings the car back and return it to its spot is who initiates it.
Okay, all right, okay. You had, you arrived at her residence, is that right? Did you go to her, take the vehicle to her residence to pick her up?
Yes.
Okay, and about what time was that?
According to my text message, ten fifty-one.
Okay, all right, so tell us what happens next. You get to the residence and then what happens?
I get to the residence and the director comes out a few moments later. And we drive, I get on the highway. Well, first I kind of Google and then get on the highway and head to Jefferson City.
And who, are you driving?
Yes.
Okay, and, okay, so you drive to Jefferson City, and it takes, you know, roughly about how long did it take for you guys to get there?
About two hours.
Okay, and on the way, are you inquiring anymore into what this, what the trip was about?
No, this is not the first time that I've reserved a vehicle for the director or that I've, you know, let her and I have done things like go to places or meetings and things in a city vehicle. So I've never had a reason to question, you know, why.
Okay, all right, did you, and did you feel like you had an understanding though as, about what the purpose was of the?
Well, let me object in a leading fashion, but subject to that.
So yes, you can answer. Did you feel like you had, you know, an understanding of what the trip was for?
I honestly, when she asked me to reserve the car, I reserved the car. She's my director. We've never had an issue before. I did not foresee it being an issue that day. We've never done anything knowingly to, you know, sidetrack or anything like that. So for me, she was going to go take her business. And even in the message, if you see, she asked me to go. Originally, I had no idea, thoughts, or anything about going because we had furniture being delivered that day. We had all kinds of things going on. And so I had to like reschedule some things. She had to help me reschedule some things. And so, no, you know, she asked me to go, I'm ready.
So where do you go when you get to Jefferson City?
First of all, I must say I passed the exit up and had to turn around. And when I turned around, she kind of guided me to where we were going. It's been many years since I've been in Jefferson City since I worked in education, so it's been quite a long time. We ended up at the, we passed the governor's mansion and ended up at the Capitol. I noticed as we were going like around the circle, her vehicle was on the left-hand side part. And so I actually spotted her car because she has a very distinctive plate. She is a Delta, so her license plate identifies that. And because I'm her assistant, I also know her license plate number. And so I was like, there's your car. And she looked over there and she said, here it is. And so there was a, what I know now to be like a church, like diagonal to the right of there. And she's like, well, pull over here. So I kind of put over to the parking lot. There was a little parking lot, very small parking lot right there. And I parked and she began to do what she needed to do in her phone. But before I say that, I must say that during the ride there, we did have multiple like conferences, conference calls with deputy directors, staff. There were some meetings and things like that. Prior to this, I was actually upset with the director. Her and I had not talked a few days because of a situation with one of my staff members. And so we spent a good portion of the beginning stretch of that trip talking about my frustration and the situation that happened in which I was upset with the director, so.
And you said when you got there and you were, you passed the governor's mansion and you were, you know, were near the Capitol and you spotted her vehicle? And you noticed the license plate because she's a Delta?
Yes.
And just, just for the record, what do you mean she's a Delta? Is that a sorority that she belongs to?
Yes, and her, I guess the term's license plate holder or license plate frame. It has the Delta logo and things on there, so.
Okay, and so you were familiar with that, familiar with the car that she drives?
Yes.
Okay, and then you said that she told you to pull over and park at a church?
Well, it was a lot, and it was literally right there next to the church, so, yeah.
Okay, and then you said she proceeded to do something with her phone?
So she like sent a couple of text messages, and then she tried to reach her husband, who was there. She called him a few times, and to my knowledge, he didn't answer.
Okay, all right, and then what happened?
Then she just said, we're gonna wait a few minutes. I think I got a call from one of my colleagues, and so I took that. Once I got off the call, I think at that particular time, she was finally able to reach him. And I didn't hear what he said, but when she got off the phone, she had mentioned that he was like headed to like lunch with some people, whatever, at another location. And so she directed me to that location.
Okay, and what was that location?
At the time, I did not know what it was. It was a building from the Capitol, like a block away. It was like a white building.
So she directed you to drive there?
Yes.
Okay, and did you do that?
Yes.
All right, and when you got there, where'd you park?
So the parking lot is a little weird, and then they had like those mobile dumpsters out. And so I parked like on, in the fire lane by like one of those little mobile dumpsters or whatever.
And what was this location?
It's the Capitol something. It's, I want to say it's called the Capitol Plaza or something like that. I don't know exactly what it's called.
And do you know, what kind of a business or establishment was it?
It's like a hotel and conference center.
Okay, all right, and so you get there, you park, and then what happens next?
I, I'm in the car, and the director gets out the car and go inside.
And what, did you see like what entrance she went into?
No, because I was like on the side of building and she walked around.
Okay, and so, so she walked somewhere around the building, you said?
Yes.
And went into the building?
Yes.
All right, and so you stayed in the car?
Yes.
What happened next?
Yes, sir. She made a couple of calls. She inquired if somebody was there. Then she went inside. She was inside for a little while.
Let's back up a second. So you said she made a couple of calls?
Yes.
Okay, what, so you, while you both were sitting in the car?
Yes.
Okay, what were the calls she made?
I don't know all the calls she made. I know that she did make a personal call, and well...
What was the personal call?
I know that she like, she made a couple of calls. I don't know exactly how many she made. I know she made a couple of calls, and I know she tried to reach her husband again. That time he didn't answer, and so she was like trying to figure out where he was. And by this time, she was like a little frustrated because she didn't know if he was okay or what was going on, anything like that, so.
Did she, and when she made the calls, did she make any of them while on speakerphone?
Some of them, yes.
Okay, and so did you overhear while you're sitting there next to her in the car? A call made on speakerphone, any of those calls that she made, did you overhear them?
Well, let me object to the relevancy. How would that be relevant? You can go ahead and answer.
Yes, she did make a call. She did contact someone and say it was emergency. She needs to talk to them. I don't know the person's name, you know, at that time, who she was referencing.
Someone in the hotel?
I believe so. I'm not sure. I can't, I can't.
It's speculation, but you may answer.
I can't say, because I did not know the person. I never saw the director actually engage with anybody else.
But you said you believe so. Why do you believe so?
Well, let me object, calls for speculation, and you said you didn't know.
So why do you believe so?
I like to, I like to think that I know my director pretty well, and I've never really seen her so... She's a journalist. She has a degree in journalism, so investigation stuff is her thing. And so I've never really seen her in a mode where she was like adamant about making sure something, whatever, that she, you know, something was right or wasn't right or whatever. And so she did make a call. She gave somebody's name or whatever. Again, I don't, I don't know the name that she gave.
You don't, are you saying you don't remember it, or?
No, I don't know the name that she gave, is what I'm saying.
Was this on speakerphone?
Yes.
Can I have a continuing objection to the relevancy of this speakerphone and names and all that? Can we read that? Take a two-minute break, get my request, please.
Okay.
We are now going off the record. The time is ten eleven a.m. We are now back on the record. The time is ten twenty-three a.m.
All right, Dr. Byrd, let's see, I think we left off somewhere where you, you were describing, well, you had testified that while you're sitting there in the car with the director, parked at that hotel, she made some calls, some of which were on speakerphone, so where you were overhearing some of that, some of the calls, is that right?
Yes.
And you mentioned that she called, she made a call to someone, and you weren't, you don't know the name of the person?
Yes.
Okay, tell, but tell us about what you overheard about that call, what you overheard of that call?
Before I answer that, I want to make a statement. This process has been very uncomfortable for me. This has affected me personally, emotionally, mentally, and it has affected my work environment. I am not comfortable with talking about the personal things pertaining to the director. I've expressed that. Her and I have had direct conversations about it. However, I understand the situation that I'm in, and so I will do the best that I can to answer the questions truthfully and honestly.
Okay, so conversation that was on speakerphone, part of which you overheard. I want to, I want you to ask, I want you to tell us what you overheard on that conversation.
And I want to say that during the events of this, I really didn't know a lot of the things until after the fact. I know that she made a call or was trying to search like dinner places close by the Capitol to see where her husband was. And one of the places was to this hotel conference center that was diagonal from the Capitol, which is where we were. She did call that hotel and gave a name. I don't know the person's name. Like I mentioned, I never saw the director interact with anybody. I later learned to believe that it may have been someone that her husband had relationship with prior to the director. And then the director went inside.
Okay, and when you say you don't know the person's name, or I want to make sure I'm understanding. Are you saying that you, there was a name, you're not familiar with that name, or you don't remember the name?
I don't remember the person's name, but I do know from conversation with the director that she kind of, like I mentioned after the fact, explained to me.
Who the person was?
Yeah.
Who was the person?
She said that it was her husband's ex-wife.
And what's her name?
Oh, I don't know her name.
Oh, okay, but it was her husband's ex-wife?
Yes.
Okay, so was it your understanding that she was trying to, she called that person that day while you're sitting there on speakerphone?
Yes.
Okay, and what was said in that conversation?
She didn't say anything. She called the hotel conference center and asked to speak to the person. And I'm assuming they transferred the call, and then the director went inside. But she never actually talked to anybody, you know, except for like the front desk.
Okay, all right, so... Okay, all right, so after that, the director gets out of the car and goes inside?
Yes.
So did, did they transfer to her to a room?
I believe so.
Okay, and after that, she hangs up and goes inside?
Yes.
All right, and and you stayed in the car?
Yes.
What happens next?
Um, I I need to back up for something. Um, during our travel to Jefferson City, um one of the conversations the director and I did have, she did actually watch, I think, we were going to Jefferson City. Um, and I did answer her and um she, I told her that um it was, you know, it's my understanding that it was the last day of a general session. And I knew that um they had taken up the issue with the police department um takeover. Um, the Board of Alderman had voted to dismantle um one of the fire pension boards um that the director served as secretary of. And um also knew that her husband had recently been appointed to um a workforce development or something like that board by the governor. And I thought that um we were going there for those purposes. Um, and I did express said to her, um she did not respond, she just said, she'll tell me later. Um, she didn't really give me any details, I just said, okay. Um. And I believe that because I've I've been around the city, obviously, long enough. I I recall situations where previous her predecessor had to go um to Jefferson City for a number of things. Um, so I wanted to make sure that I did not leave that part out in terms of um that conversation. Um, but when the director went inside of the building, because I was parked like on the side where the parking spots were, because like the, we went in like on the, we went in in a funny kind of way, so how the parking lot was. Um, at that particular time, I did not know where we were. I didn't see any signage or anything like that because of how we went into the parking lot. Um, I was in the car for about, I guess, thirty minutes or so. And like I mentioned, I was parked where they had those portable dumpsters there, so I saw people like bringing furniture and bedding and things out. Um, and um eventually, I did see um the director's husband come out of the building. Um, I did not see him at the time, I just saw a person walk by. Um, and then he walked backwards and opened the door.
And you 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 recognized her husband?
Well, when he opened the passenger door, my heart fell out my chest. Um, yes, I recognized him.
But you knew him like from prior?
Yes, we we had engaged multiple times, multiple times.
All right, and so so you you recognized him and knew exactly who he was?
Yes.
Okay, so you said he backed up, and then what happened?
Yeah, um it was almost like he had like a deja vu. I mean, obviously, we're in a city vehicle, it says City of St. Louis on there. And I, it was kinda like a situation of, mind you, I didn't see like body features or anything like that because I really wasn't paying attention. I was more so in my phone and stuff like that. I um, I provided you the log so you can see um like the text messages and the times at which all that was happening. Um, so I was like in my phone and the passenger door opened unexpectedly, 'cause where I was parked, I was anticipating seeing her come. Um, not anticipating somebody coming and opening the door, you know, um and screw the hell out of me. Um, so anyway, he opened the door and he cut, he looked down and he said, she's here, isn't she? Um, and I had seen it, yes. Um, he nodded, he closed the door, and he walked out of the parking lot. Um, she.
So, okay, before you go, so he closed the door and then which direction does he go?
To the Capitol.
Okay, um and you said that he, now, how did he leave? I mean, was he walking, was he running? How how did he leave?
Um, he was, he was moving very, very fast. He was moving very, very quickly.
Okay, all right, was he jogging?
Um, you could say that, you could say that, yes.
I'm I I'm, yeah, so I'm just asking you, was that how you would describe it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then what happens?
Um. I communicated with the director that I had just saw her husband and I didn't know if she had made contact with him or not. And so she came out like within seconds of me saying that.
Did you call her?
Um, I believe I did.
Okay, so so after he, after her husband um uh goes off, you you think you called her?
I know I communicated with her.
Okay.
That I had just saw him.
Okay, and she hadn't come back yet?
No.
All right, okay, so go ahead, what happened next?
Um. So when she come out of the building, um she gets in the car, um she's very upset. Um, she said, let's go back to St. Louis. She's uh pull out the parking lot, try to figure out, you know, how to get back to St. Louis. Um, he's standing at the light, we're in the car, um the director nods to acknowledge him. They don't exchange words or anything like that. Um, and we get on the road and come back to St. Louis.
You said that when she comes back, she's very upset. What what do you mean by that? What what makes you say that?
I mean, I don't wanna speculate as to why. Um, she was upset, but she was she was very emotional.
How so?
'Cause you asked her to feel like?
I I mean, you you said she's very emotional. I'm just trying to figure out what does that mean? Was she angry? Was she crying? Was she banging things? Was she yelling? What what, why do you say she was emotional?
Um, she was expressing her frustration to me um in terms of what she was feeling in the moment.
And what did she say?
Um. She felt hurt and disappointed.
Did you ask her why?
No.
Okay, um she just, she said she felt hurt and disappointed?
Yes.
All right, um and uh anything else? Did you, did she say anything else?
No, she was, she was crying in the moment, so I was more so trying to console her and calm her down. Um, and so first portion, which is why, 'cause she kinda directed me when we got there, I had to like figure out on my own going back. Um, so I was trying to console her and GPS as well.
Okay.
Um, she made a comment that we needed to get back to St. Louis as quickly as possible. And so I was trying to map the best way to get back to St. Louis. Um, she was concerned about she was concerned about getting back before he did. Um, I didn't quite understand it at that time, didn't ask no questions, um but I knew that I needed to get her back before he did.
Um, so you, so you drive, you you drive back, you're headed back to St. Louis?
Yes.
And as you indicated, as you're leaving, you know, you see him standing at the light and there was some acknowledgement or?
Yeah, they never actually, to my knowledge, they never engaged with each other, they never had an exchange of words or anything like that, so.
So um you then proceeded to drive back to St. Louis?
Yes.
And what if anything happens on the way back?
Um, when she was able to calm down a little bit, she kinda opened up to me about her feelings in the moment. Um, it wasn't like right away. Um, we stopped and got gas, um filled the car back up, um filled it up completely. Um, so I think after that, that some, her and I began to kinda have personal moments of conversation. Um, she did say that she needed to get back to St. Louis because she did not want to see um her husband in the moment. Um, I understood that, and at that moment, um I wanted to make sure that she was okay and that, you know, I didn't put her in any risky situation, not knowing what I had already been thrust into.
Okay.
Um, so her and I had conversations about what she was thinking, what she was feeling um in the moment. She made phone calls to she made phone calls to family, um friends, um I I believe she took a couple of work calls on the time. Um, and then the rest of the work calls, I kinda took care of so that she could kind of settle her nerves, um.
You said she called family?
Yes.
Were any of those calls um on speakerphone?
Um. Some of them.
Okay, who'd she call?
Um, I don't remember the exact order, but um I believe she called her, she called her daughter, she called.
Which which daughter? What's her daughter's name?
To my knowledge, she only has one.
Okay.
Um.
And what's her name? What's her name?
Um, Ashley.
Okay, okay, so she called Ashley, um.
Um. I, she, uh she called her father. Um.
What did she say in these conversations?
Um, she was expressing her frustration and what she felt pertaining to her husband and what she was thinking at the time, or or assumptions was of whatever transpired personally um during that moment.
Okay, and were those on speakerphone?
Um, her, her conversation with her father wasn't on speakerphone, I don't recall.
But with the daughter?
Um, yes, with her daughter.
Okay, so tell us about what the daughter said.
I don't remember the conversation verbatim, um. And I, and I, I must also state this, I don't know if she called her daughter or her daughter called her, but they did have a conversation. Um, and her daughter was kind of like, um okay, now what kind of situation, like um what are you gonna do or what's going on? And she told her daughter um what she felt and was feeling or what she thought pertaining to um her husband in Jefferson City.
And I know, and look, I I I know that this is not easy, um and I'm not suggesting it is, but this is where we are. So I wanna ask you, what did she tell her daughter on that call?
I I don't recall verbatim.
Okay.
Um, I do know that, um. I do know that she had expressed to her dad that she felt like um her husband was doing something outside of their relationship or whatever. Um, I I don't know how her daughter found out so quickly, but her daughter was kind of like joking and laughing about it. Um, and the director was like very furious, um. And they, I don't, she didn't have much of a conversation with her daughter, um.
Did she call anyone else?
Um, I I I will describe like a friend she called. I don't know the person's name or anything like that. Um, I did her that conversation. I will say that she expressed the same thing to her friend. I know that that particular person was very supportive, understanding, consoling to her. Um, and and I know that she called her, what she described is like her, her, her pastor, her mentor, and had a conversation.
Who was that?
Person as well.
Who was that?
Um. Reverend Bowie?
Honey, do you know how to spell that?
I don't know how to spell his name.
Okay. Was it, is that Linden Bowie?
Um, I believe so. I've, I I do know the person. I've known him for many, many years and I've just always called him Pastor Bowie.
Okay, and um so you know what church he is the pastor of?
Um, Zari Travelers.
Okay, and how do you know him?
Um, before I started working for the city, I did grant writing and stuff like that, church leadership conferences, and he's attended um some of my conferences.
Okay, now was that conversation on speakerphone so that you could hear his voice too or?
Um, yes.
Okay, all right, okay, so uh what else happened? So you're, you're on your way back, you've described these calls that were made. Um, and you arrive in St. Louis at some point?
Yes.
Okay, does any any other thing happen um on the way back before you actually get to St. Louis?
Um. She began explaining to me what she felt um about Jefferson City and seeing her husband and me learning then that it was a hotel and conference center or whatever. Um, and that he saw or was with his um previous partner before her. Um. And that's really the extent of like the over-the-road conversation.
Okay, so where where do you go when you get back to St. Louis?
Um, to her house.
Okay, um is that where she told you to to go?
Yes, that was the urgent, urgent matter was to get back to her house.
And about what time was this that you arrived back at her house in St. Louis?
I don't know the exact time, but it was well after like six o'clock or so.
Okay, and where where is her house located?
Um, it's in the Central West End.
Okay, um and you you, do you remember the street or?
Uh, any of that? Um, I always mix it up. I don't know if it's Waterford or something like that.
Is it Waterman?
Waterman, yes.
Okay, but it's in, whatever it is, it's in the Central West End, as you recall?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's where you go, and I'm sorry, what, what, about what time did you say it was?
Um, it was, it was, it was after six o'clock. It was after six o'clock.
All right, so um you get back to her house and then what happens?
Um, I park, I'm still in the car, she goes inside. Um, while she's inside, I'm trying to reach my parents to um solidify some things for my children. Um, because by this time, I needed to take care of some things for my household. Um, um, I don't know if she got in the house or not, but she came back and um she um was able to identify where her car was and she's like, we have to go to my car to get the keys, 'cause she couldn't get into her house, whatever.
Okay, so so it's your understanding she did not go get into her house at that point?
Yes.
Okay, and you said she identified where her car was, what do you mean?
Um, she has a a newer car where it has tracking on there, so she was able to identify where it was.
She was able to track it?
Yeah.
Okay, um and was there any tracking of the car going on while you were driving back?
Um, yeah, she did periodically see um where he was. He was on the highway. We never got on the highway. We took like the back road. It wasn't necessarily planned, but that's just how we got back.
Okay, um so and is, was it, so is your understanding that you're kinda almost racing to get back before he does?
I was.
Okay, um so you said that she was able to track where her car was? And and where was it located?
Um, when we got back to St. Louis?
Yes.
Um, it wasn't too far from the house and so I don't remember exactly where she said it was, but the timing was like we had no, no time to spare. Um, when she came back to the car and said we need, she couldn't get in the house, um she did state that it was at um a casino. And we went to the casino. Actually, I'd never been to that casino before.
Which casino was it?
Um, I I wouldn't say the name, it's. Um, I, I would have said the name was Hollywood or something like that in Maryland Heights.
Okay.
Um, so, she directed there, like I said, I had never been there, um. It was close to like the Anthony Theater, I've been there, I've been there, but, and so that's what I recognized. Uh, we get there, we're looking for a car, um, so driving around the parking lot on the outside, did not see it.
Do you know why you're, why she wants to get to her car?
No, um, I, I knew that she couldn't get in her house, and so I know that she said that she, you know, our keys.
Okay.
Um, we did not see a car in the parking lot, um, so we did go into the garage. Um, we didn't see it, then as we were coming out, um, we saw it parked. Uh, she saw it parked and she said, you know, pull over here, so I pulled over.
This is in the garage of the casino?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so I just stopped, she got the car, walked, um, to her car. Uh, I learned that it was parked in the VIP area, and so she got whatever she needed out of her car. Um, came back to the car that I was in, and then, uh, I took her back to her house.
Okay, and when you're going back to her house, um, what if anything is going on in, in the car during the trip?
I don't recall anything significant happened at that time except for, um. I guess my mind at that moment was. To get home, um, as quick as possible.
Do you know if she retrieved anything out of the car?
She did retrieve some things out of the car, um, specifically what she retrieved, I don't know.
Okay, um, and at any point does she, uh, play any, play a recording for you that day?
Um, she, she did get, uh, she did get a phone out of the car, um. And a few other things, I don't know what all she got out of the car. Um, besides, well, I, I acknowledge she got her phone and some keys. And maybe some, then some documents or something, uh, I don't know what else she got out of the car, so I do acknowledge that. Um, she did begin to listen, you know, play something at that, but every time I didn't know what it was. Um, but I did recognize the voice that it was her husband's voice, um, on the recording, um.
Where was, where was she playing that from, you, was it a, was it a tape of some sort, was it the phone, what was it?
It was a phone.
Okay, alright, and you heard, um, her husband's voice on the recording?
Yes.
Okay, and what was, you know, what was being said?
There was a lot of personal things that was definitely been said, um, and I'm not necessarily comfortable with saying all the things that was said. Um, but for relevance sake, um, I will say that there was a conversation. With, um, like, the director's husband and, um. The person that he was with in Jefferson City, um, there, in that conversation. Um. And in that conversation, he identified or, or communicated that he saw me, um. There and, um, to her, um, her as in the director. Um, and he expressed a, his frustration about it, um. He said like he was foolish and things like that, um, he had a few choice names for me. Um, and I understand, you know, the, the frustration of that moment.
He said what was foolish?
Um, of us being there, of him seeing us.
In Jefferson City?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then there was a lot of personal things that was said that, um, I'm, I'm not comfortable with saying.
Did you come to learn though, it was something we've talked about before, um. While we had, while, while we had you here, um, so you, you talked about how. When, um, you were in the car with, uh, the director. And she proceeds to play the recording of her husband Reverend Gray and you overhear it, right?
Yes.
I, I, I wanna ask you what was on that recording, what was said on the record?
Objection, irrelevant, waste of time.
Um, I can't recant the specifics of it, but. Um, what I do recall was, what I know now, it's a big conversation with. He and his ex-wife pertaining to the facts of, um, the director not being there. Um. Both him expressing their frustration about it, um, and then him expressing, um, his views of me.
What did he say about you?
Um, he had a few choice words about me, um, I think he called me a couple of fags or something like that, so.
Anything else? Or anything, you guys were in the car and you're going back to her house?
Yes, um, she's more frustrated by that, cause of hearing the conversation, like I mentioned, there was a lot of personal things. Uh, that I'm not comfortable with sharing, um, that was said, um, she went back to the house. Um, I never got out of the house, um, I mean, I never got out of the car. It's one of the things that was supposedly stated, that's not factual, um. She was in the house for a few moments, um, she grabbed a couple personal things from out of the house. Got back in the car, um, she did make some personal statements to me about her husband, um, that I'm not comfortable with sharing. Um, but it did make me uncomfortable about the situation.
Well, wait a minute, so what, what personal statements did she say to you that made you uncomfortable?
Um. I'm not comfortable with sharing, but I will say that I understood the urgency of. My director being safe and me being safe.
Okay, alright, um, and so. Okay, we'll go off the record.
We are now going off the record, the time is ten fifty-five AM. We are now back on the record, the time is eleven oh three AM.
Okay, um, so I wanna pick up, uh, kind of where we left off, you mentioned, um. Uh, that you're, you, you get back to the director's, um, house. She goes in, grabs some items, come back, comes back out to the car and tells you some things that make you uncomfortable.
Well, object, that mischaracterizes his testimony.
Well, you, I, well, you, you, you clear, if I've mischaracterized it somehow, you clear it up, so she comes back, gets into the car and what, and what happens?
Um, she. Grabs a few things, um, come back to the car. Um, now, I wanna say she came back to the car twice.
Okay.
Um, the first, the first time she didn't bring anything back, it was the second time. Um, and she brought very, just, uh, you know, just a little bit of things. Um, I wanna say that she did not move out of her house or anything, I did not help her move out of her house. Um, but she did grab like overnight bag or something, um, got in the car. She acknowledged to me that sometimes, um. Her husband would get frustrated and, you know, she just didn't wanna be around him at the moment, um, and so. I understood that and we're in a haste to get away from there. Um, she didn't make a, a comment that kind of shocked me because. I actually knew her husband before I knew of her husband, before I knew her, um, I actually had visited them in a. Personal setting, not like their home or anything like that, but, and I made no connections, even, didn't even realize the. Same last name at that particular moment, um, but, um. You know, she's like, well, you know, there's a suitcase or something like that that was there and she had mentioned about like. Maybe a weapon or something and she wasn't there anymore, and in my mind, I'm like, well, okay. Well, if you don't know how it's gonna respond, or if you, you know, stay out of these moments and I don't wanna be a miss of this, so. I wanna just kind of haste to get away, um, we did leave there, um. And then I took her to her daughter's house, um, I don't know the exact time it was, but it was late in the evening. Um, by this time I was a little bit antsy too, and I think I was maybe expressing some frustration, um.
Why were you antsy?
This was a whole day then, um, it was the day before holiday, um, I do have, you know, I'm a single parent. So I had to make some adjustments as well, I would, and I did do that, um, but. Thinking about my personal life and then thinking about, you know, I'm the, and knowing my director personally, she don't have like. Lot of family here and things like that, and so, I'm doing a two-fold thing, I'm trying to be the parent me. And then also trying to be the adult man, um, and make sure that at this particular moment outside of her being, at this particular moment. Outside of her being my director, she's also a woman, um, and so, you know, wanted to make sure she was good. Um, she did acknowledge some, like, some of her husband's previous records or whatever. Um, I knew nothing about it prior to that moment, um, like. History, things that, that's on the internet that I knew nothing about and they were like, search his name or Google his name or anything like that. Um, like, so, I mentioned, like I said, at that particular time, I knew nothing about, you know, like his personal history or anything like that, so.
I guess, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm trying to understand what are you, so, history, internet, what are you, what are you talking about?
Um, where he, because he's a public figure, any, any moments where he's had like. Um, outbursts or any, um, conflicts or anything like that, um. That has been documented or has been communicated or is out there and on the internet.
Okay, and she was like telling you these things?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, what was your reaction to hearing these things?
To her, I didn't have a reaction, but internally, I, I definitely did.
What, what, did you, were, were you concerned?
Yes.
What was your concern?
Um. For, for our safety, I guess, and making sure that we were good.
And I guess what I'm unclear on is, what, what about the information she told you made you concerned for your safety?
Um. Having moments where, you know, uh, where you have to get support or. Have to have somebody to like intervene during relationship challenges or difficulties or disputes or things like that. Um, and so, she did, we had some personal conversations about, um. Some of those moments, not, she didn't give like any specific dates or anything like that, but she did express that, um. You know, that her and her husband had some of those personal moments where, um, she had to call for. Like a mentor or something like that to help or de-escalate or calm, calm her husband down. And so, because I had never really experienced him or her like that, I didn't want to. And so for me, it was like, let's just get going, um, so we did.
Where did you go next? Oh, you said, I think you said to her.
Yeah, to her daughter's house.
Daughter's house, um, and, uh, so, what happened when you get to her daughter's house?
Um, it's late in the day, nighttime, um, I don't think the director nor I ate that day at all. Um. We hit her daughter's house, um, I still in the car, never get out the car at that moment. And she called her daughter, let her know that we're outside, um, she started to gather her like overnight bag or whatever. Um, her daughter comes down and she's sitting in the car, they're talking. Her daughter expressed frustration with her mom, and that kind of went on for a while, um.
What, so, as, as much as you, frustration, what do you mean, what, what did she say? Um, when you, objection, when you say she, what did who say? The daughter, the director's daughter.
Uh, same objection, relevance.
By this point, um, her daughter was expressing her frustration to her mom about. The entire situation in Jefferson City, um, and basically expressing that. Her mom needs to put herself first, um, you know, her mom's life, her safety, her career. All of that should be at the forefront of every decision that she made, um, they had about. Twenty, twenty-five minute conversation, um, it did get pretty intense. Um, so I ultimately ended up getting out the car and Ashley and I had a sidebar conversation. Um, because at this point, I kind of felt, well, I felt that it was too much for, at the moment. Um, nobody was with the director that day but me, nobody saw the tears. Nobody saw the frustration, nobody saw the hurt, nobody heard the voice that I heard. Nobody saw, you know, me having to get tissue, nobody was there to console her but me. Um, nobody seen her, you know, trying to play in her mind. What she needed to do to get to where she felt she needed to get to, and I'm with her and I don't know. Um, but ultimately to a safe space, to lay her head at night.
When you say later at night, can you, roughly, what time are we talking?
All I know is very, very dark, um. I, and I'm, I can guesstimate from the actual, when I actually looked at my. Phone logs from the day I actually called someone that was able to talk to me until I actually got home and it was like. After twelve at that point, um, so I would, I would have to guesstimate. Ten thirty, eleven-ish, somewhere around there, um.
Okay.
I don't know the exact total time that we were, you know, at, um, Ashley's house, this all happened outside.
Okay.
Um, the director called, um, and I don't wanna put words in her mouth or paraphrase, but. Someone that's a friend or, um, a neighbor where she used to live prior to the residence she's at now.
Okay, and, um, is that where you ended up taking her?
Um, after we had conversation with Ashley, um. That's where we ended up going next.
Okay, and did, and did you know who this person was?
No.
Okay.
I just knew that, um, they both were ministers and they both had, um, relationship with the director. And I say they both, I know that the director had a conversation with a female, um. Uh, when we actually got to the residence, um, there was a male there and, um. The director called the, um, lady back and she.
Called the lady what?
Called the lady back and, um, you know. Wanted some reassurance that it was okay to come, because the lady wasn't there, but the guy was there, so it was more so like. Would I interpret to be a respect thing, um, and I did hear, um. The lady acknowledging, say, you know, if you're good, we're, we're like family, um, you'll be okay, she had already talked to her husband about it or whatever. And so, we, uh, she gave me, uh, well, she directed me to, you know, where we were going. Um, we got there, pulled into the driveway, um, the gentleman came out, he was very pleasant, um, she introduced me to the gentleman. I handed over a bag after they hugged and greeted each other, um, and I asked her, was she gonna be okay? And she said, yeah, and I asked her, are you sure? And she said, yeah. Um, and so, I watched them walk through the garage into the house, um, and then I backed out. And I went home that night.
Alright, and, um, so it was, you, you believe it was like sometime after midnight?
It was definitely around that time of midnight.
Okay, alright, uh.
If I did text her and call her the next day, um, to check on her. Um, I believe we talked, um, the next day, um, she sounded a lot better. Um, and I believe she told me that she was like headed to dinner or something like that by herself. And I was like, are you, are you good, you're safe, and, um, she had acknowledged that she was. Down by her daughter's house at that time, so, I'm under the assumption that they kind of like worked out their differences and from the night before the conversation. And she was okay, so.
Did you have any more, um? Did you have any more, um, conversations or communications with the director about the events of that day, you know, after that?
After that day, no. Mary and I did not have any conversations about what happened that day until, um, I got, um, a call and text message from, um, someone in the mayor's office asking me to come in to, um, meet with them. And mind you, this there, when I, the following week, um, I did have a conversation with a colleague. And we talked about in a general sense of, um, being over in the area, um, that day. I, I, I don't recall going into great detail with my colleague. I did express that, um, it was, it was an uncomfortable experience for me. And it wasn't necessarily what I thought or anticipated, um, we were going to Jefferson City for. But I was honest and I did acknowledge that the director did, you know, tell me like the details of, you know, why we're going to Jefferson City or whatever. I understood, you know, once we got back, it was more so like kinda like survival safety mode, safety, safety mode, and so the colleague and I had that brief two, three minute conversation. Like I said, a little, like a week or so after the events that happened, and then there was no other conversation. The director and I didn't have any conversation after that until, um, I got called into, um, meet with Jared and Sarah, and they, um, asked me about the events of that.
Before we get there, so the colleague that you spoke with, who was that?
Uh, her name is Bianca Lambert.
Okay, and she, uh, works in the department personnel?
Yes.
Okay, and sometime after the events, you, um, told her about the events of that day?
Yeah, she kept asking me, um, like, you know, are you okay, what's, what's wrong? You kinda different standoffish, um, that kinda stuff, and, um, and I told her, I said, I'm, I'm okay, just, I'm just moving a little bit differently right now. I didn't really think it was as obvious that the director and I had not really been engaging as closely as we had prior, you know, have, have, we had did prior to the situation. And that kinda preempted the, um, conversation with Bianca and I.
And then you said you were called in, uh, to speak with, uh, with Jared Boyd and who else?
Sarah Baker, so Sarah-
Who were they?
Jared is the mayor's chief of staff and, um, Sarah functions as the deputy chief of staff for the mayor.
Okay, and about when is this that, that you're called to speak with him?
I believe my phone records say like August the nineteenth.
Okay, alright.
So, and Sarah and I had communicated multiple times before, so it was not out of the ordinary for her to, like, call or text me. We had been working, um, very closely with amending one of the administrative regulations. And so, to be honest, that was my assumption as to why. I, I never really picked up the urgency with it, I knew that the administration had been on the director to get the, um, amended regulation out as quickly as possible. But there were so many nuances that need to, needed to be addressed. And so there was a lot of pressure with trying to get that done. So I walked into the mayor's office, well, I had to explain to her that I actually wasn't even at work that day. And so I had some things that I needed to, I was getting addressed with my children. So I told her I can come in later on in the day. I think I mentioned to her like three thirty, four o'clock, something around there, and so-
You said, mentioned to her?
Her, as in Sarah.
Okay, alright.
And I did, and so, um, once I got done, I did say I can head to the office then. Like I said, I was kinda thinking it was about, um, the regulation that was being amended. So I went there, didn't know what was going on, um, I did not know that Jared was gonna be, you know, in the meeting. And so, we're sitting in the office, um, Sarah and I kinda chit-chat, and then Jared walks in, the door closed. And I'm like, oh crap. And then, um, that just kinda hammered me, um, they was like, so, tell me about Jefferson City. And my heart just fell out my chest again, I was like, oh crap, you know, what's going on here? And they asked about the date, and I'll be honest, at that moment, because of the things that transpired, I had not thought about the situation from that moment again, and time had gone by. And so I said, um, well, let me check my phone, because I remember that we had correspondence from the day, the director and I, and, um, I did check my phone. And then I acknowledged to Jared and Sarah that it was July third. And that's really the moment where I realized or concreted in my mind the date of it.
So, so in this meeting, so they're asking you about, you know, the trip to Jefferson City?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, do you proceed to recount what happened, the events of that day?
I do.
Okay, you told them essentially what you described in this deposition today, uh, that, that happened?
I did express to them all the things that happened, um, I, it was not as in great detail as I've done today. Because at that moment, I, I was kinda like caught off guard with it. And I did not really recall all the details at that moment. I was not prepared to talk about it at the time, not that I was like afraid or, or anything like that. It was one of those things that I really had moved to the back of my mind, because it was a very, um, unique. I had never been in a situation like that before. And so, um, I recalled as best as I could the information. And I answered their questions as, you know, as honest as I could.
Okay. If you can recall about how long did that meeting last?
It wasn't long at all, I, uh, Jared's correct me if I'm wrong, I wanna say like thirty, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes. And, yeah, that's, and that, and that was that.
After that meeting, do you have any, uh, communication or conversations with the director?
Oh, yeah. I left right out of there, um, I walked right over to the building, um, our office is in the Corneille Court Building. And so I walked right to the director. And, um, walking to her office, she was sitting in her office, um, talking to her secretary. And I was like, what the hell is going on? That was my exact words. And she explained to me that, um, what was going on and that the situation in Jefferson City had been communicated to the mayor's office. And I was like, well, somebody could have told me, you know, gave me a heads up of, you know, what was going on, and so she was like, she couldn't, and then she explained to me that basically, um, the conversation that Bianca and I had, she told, um, Sarah about it, and then they called the director over, asked her questions, and then eventually got to me. And so that was what we talked about, and I was like, oh crap, so.
And that was that same day then, you still, like, August nineteenth?
August nineteenth, yeah.
Okay, let's stop there. Alright, uh-
Conversations with-
Stop there. Alright, it is, uh, I think ten to, uh, almost ten to four, twelve to four right now, that seems to be a-
I think we only have-
Three minutes and thirty seconds.
Of there, three minutes, alright, go ahead, the last three minutes. Go ahead.
She, the director was out on leave during that time, so we, um, didn't have a whole lot of conversation, um, during the time that she was out. There were certainly matters in which her and I had to talk about, um, because at this time, I was thrust into, um, accounting functions and things like that, that director had been heavily involved in. But particularly to this situation, um, when she came back, her and I had conversation because I was trying to understand, um, the position that I was been putting in. And I had expressed to the director that, you know, I was very uncomfortable with the dynamics of this situation. I was uncomfortable with sharing, um, the director's personal business, pertaining to her husband and her and the events surrounding, you know, Jefferson City outside of the director and I interactions, and I felt like if it needed to be shared or communicated, that, that should come from the director and not from me. She and I, you know, she understood where I was coming from. And she expressed that she did not want her personal business out because it wasn't relevant to the matters that was going on. And I told her that, you know, for me, I didn't really know what was happening between the director and the administration, because like I said, she was out. But when she got back, um, I learned that she had got a letter from the, um, the mayor's office that was signed by Jared, um, which is known to be a pre-termination letter or whatever. And, um, that kind of like created a snowball effect of a number of other things. And the director and I had conversations about, um, you know, I just kept expressing to her that this was very uncomfortable for me.
Is that it?
That's it.
Alright, so with that, uh, that, and it, now, just as I understand, is that all that the appointing authority is offering from the deposition? Or that just-
Yes, that's it.
Okay, but in addition, the, uh, director has more to offer.
An hour and eight minutes yet.
Okay, and but, given the time and the other constraints on us, that is gonna have to be it for today. And with regard to, uh, have this discussion with the parties and when everyone would be available, we will not have any more hearings, all of, uh, today's Thursday, not tomorrow, not all of next week. So the week after next, I believe it's Monday and Tuesday, the twenty-
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday, I'm sorry, is it Tuesday and Wednesday, the twenty-seventh and?
So twenty eighth and twenty ninth.
Tuesday and Wednesday is the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Is the twenty-eighth the day that we have to start?
On the twenty-ninth, I just can't go beyond four.
What about the twenty eighth?
No, I think-
Yeah, that's alright.
Yeah, that's fine, that was the foul, the previous week that I-
Ten o'clock, twenty-eighth?
Yes.
We start out on the twenty-eighth at ten o'clock?
And the twenty ninth.
And expect morning and afternoon that day. Start at ten o'clock on the twenty-ninth, morning, on the afternoon, until four o'clock, like today. And then we'll be adjourning, except hopefully, of course, we'll be all done by then, right? So, uh, at any rate, on the twenty-eighth, the first thing we'll do is the next hour and eight minutes of playing the deposition, and that will be the end of the deposition, and then we'd be back to additional witnesses on behalf of the appointing authority. Whenever the appointing authority finishes their witnesses, then we'd be going to any additional witnesses by the director. Alright?
Yes, and just for the record, uh, we will let them know who, because these are city witnesses that-
Who the witnesses are.
So that they, we can have a seamless transition once they end, because I won't know when they're in, but I'll let them know who would be up.
Hopefully seamless, right? Okay.
Seamlessly.
Great, thank you, Mr. Norwood, I appreciate it. I'll say my prayers about that seamless.
Keep hope alive.
Alright, so at any rate, that's it for this afternoon, I appreciate everybody's patience, uh, and, uh, the staff, uh, we'll, we'll need to get with the staff here just briefly before, uh, just make sure we've got everything gathered up and put in a secure place. And with that, councilors, I think we're done with the parties and the attorneys, right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you all very much.